For the Bloomfield Township Trustees Meeting of September 26th, if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for tonight, we're going to have two public comments, sort of. We're going to have the public comment for general, and then for anybody who's here as one of our nine applicants, we're going to have a separate public comment right before that agenda item, so that you can kind of introduce yourself and do your three minutes. So we ask that this, kind of like we do on public hearings. So we'll do first people, what's that? And then we also have the public hearing of necessity. So we'll actually have three types of public comments today. So for the first one, if it's for the SAD, or if it's for the applicants, please hold those until those are actually brought up, because those each have their own comment period. So this first one we're going to do is for anything except the SAD or the trustee applicants. Everybody got that? All right. So we now will open up public comment.
My public, hi, my name is Mark Intocley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown. I'm a Bloomfield Township precinct delegate. My public comment is related to the appointment of a trustee to the Retired Employees Healthcare Benefit Trust. I would, hopefully this trustee that's appointed will look at two very important issues. First, the unfair and unjust treatment of public safety retirees. On May 10, 2021, the board approved the split of public safety from the town fund, from the healthcare benefit trust. The funds were transferred in June and July of 2021. On August 28, 2023, the finance director, Jason Tice, admitted the township's split assets based on a valuation date of April 1, 2020, approximately 15 months prior to the fund split. The strategy deprived public safety of approximately $1.8 million of investment growth, which occurred over the same 15-month period. This inequitable treatment of public safety retirees needs to be rectified. If the township is willing to treat public safety retirees unfairly and unjustly, imagine what the township could do with respect to water and sewer customers and funding retiree healthcare benefit trust through water and sewer. Since January 2017, the township has garnered $1.4 million in contributions more than water and sewer benefits to the healthcare, more than water and sewer healthcare benefit payouts on an annual basis. It's, is it reasonable for the township to raise fees on water and sewer customers to make contributions that are not required by building inspection? No, it's not reasonable. Or are in excess of the township's approved correction action plans? No, that's not reasonable either. Or in excess of an accrued liability? No, it's not reasonable. Or in excess of a budget-approved contribution plan? No, it's not reasonable. Or required to fund obligations for property owners, including those on well and septic tanks? No, it's not reasonable. You'll recall during the August 28 meeting, Jason Tice mentioned that any overage funds in the water and sewer OPEB would be transferred to meet other obligations. That would be inappropriate. You can look it up in Bolt versus Lansing. Lastly, I wanted to thank the data that was presented on August 28th identify that Dan Devine outperformed Brian Keeps by $3 million with respect to differences in investment valuations, contributions, and benefit payouts. So I want to thank that information being presented, whether the calculations were made or not, it's there. And lastly-
Intocley, can you wrap up, please?
-inconsistent with the, what was mentioned on August 28th in the audit that's being released within the next week or two, the funded ratio of the pension trust will most likely be about 83.4%, and not the 89% reported during the meeting. Thank you.
And although we normally don't address public comment, we highly encourage that you watch August 28th. I know when, when things are said and they're incorrect, we like to dispel that with facts. So if you watch the August 28 meeting, you will see a very long hour, a couple, two hours long presentation about OPEB. This was brought on by employees that are also frustrated with being used. So as you will see, we are completely in compliance. In fact, Milliman, who's a third party and oversees it, said like some of the best that they've ever seen. So I encourage you to watch the meeting that was just referenced. You will definitely see that you're, just as the public safety has seen, that it is misspoken. It's important that that be stopped. So we are now, after August 28th, we are, the only thing we will comment on is please watch that meeting, and please learn for yourself what really is going on. Any more public comment? Anybody can come on up? Just state your name. You've got three minutes.
I'm not, is this, I'm here for the Village Roads.
So for the SAD is going to have its own public hearing at that agenda item, and then the trustees will have their own, the applicants at that. So this is for anything else? All right. We'll go ahead and close public comment. And next we'll move on to our board minutes of September 11th. We've all had a chance to look them over unless there's any changes. I look for motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That does pass. Next we'll go to approving the closed session board minutes of September 11th. Again, if there's no changes, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Faqui.
Support.
Support by treasurer Sostak. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That passes. And next we have Samantha Steckloff here, a representative, and she is here to give us a legislative update. And she represents, we have five legislative House members, so this is for the 19th House District.
Yes, to make it confusing on everyone. Hello, I am Representative Samantha Steckloff. I represent the 19th District, which is southern Bloomfield. I come from Farmington Hills, so it's northern Farmington Hills, northern Southfield, Franklin, Bingham Farms, Beverly Hills, a little bit of Bloomfield, and a little bit of Birmingham, because why not? So I'm really happy to be with you all today. I am currently serving in my second term in the state legislature. And before I served in the state legislature, I served seven years on Farmington Hills City Council. And I heard the words SAD, and I could feel the shivers down my back, as I have sat in many of those meetings till 2:00, 3:00, sometimes 4:00 AM. And I can get into some of the things that we're hoping to accomplish at the state level to help alleviate some of the pain that so many of you are seeing. I serve on appropriations. So in the state legislature, you kind of take two different routes. There's your policy route, which you hear all the fun stuff about. And then there's a few of us that serve on appropriations, which is the budget side of things. I personally love budgets. It's one of the main reasons I decided to run for office. I really love diving into those municipal budgets and really found a love for that, making sure that our priorities are really being seen in the budget, showing our residents we're putting our money where our mouth is. So that's very important to me. I chair higher education and community colleges. This has been a dream come true for me, as I have served in higher education my entire adult life. I started at the University of Kansas, went over to the University of Michigan, and then finished up at Wayne State University as the manager of undergraduate missions. And I can tell you, really being on the front lines of higher education today has really been able to allow us to accomplish so much at the state level in higher education. So I want to focus on some of the things that we were able to accomplish. One of the biggest things that we have is the new Michigan Achievement Scholarship. This is the first scholarship in the history of Michigan that affects the middle class. So if you are an incoming freshman, or you're going to be going to college next year, I implore you to please fill out the FAFSA. For the first time ever, you will be astounded to see how much money you may be eligible for. And these are grants, not just necessarily loans. When you're an incoming freshman and you're only eligible for $5,500 a year in federal loans, we have a huge problem. It's that doesn't even come close to the cost of tuition and fees nowadays. So something we're really, really trying to tackle. One of the biggest things we were able to do is lower the age of reconnect. So any Michigander over the age of 21 can get free community college. So if you're looking to go back to school, if you haven't gone to school, you want to get a certification, there are so many programs you will be eligible for that you have never been eligible for previously, that financial aid has covered. So we're doing a lot of amazing things in, in the higher education space. So definitely stay tuned for the next couple of years. I also serve as our vice chair of Joint Capital Outlay. So that is where you see a lot of the state buildings being paid for and brought to you. And that's also where a lot of our colleges and universities get some of their state projects from. I serve on general government, and a lot of you are going to be interested to hear about some of the things we're really working on. So this is where revenue sharing happens. We've been able to increase revenue sharing. We're looking at a revenue sharing trust fund that we're working with both Michigan Municipal League, our townships, to make sure that there's statutory revenue sharing for years to come, so that it can no longer be rated. For one of the first times in a very long time, we've added additional revenue sharing just for our public safety. So police and fire are getting an additional 5% this year. And again, looking to increase that as time goes on. I serve on transportation. So we're looking at trying to create a new revenue source to help with the failing roads and infrastructure we see so often in the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan, we have a very difficult time. You know, we are one of the biggest thaw to, to freeze ratios, and that's why our roads are constantly in this demise that we're seeing. So we really need to come up with a concrete revenue source that provides the enough funding for our cities, our townships, and our villages to be able to fully cover the costs. So we're looking at something called a vehicle miles travel study. So about 11 states do this throughout the country, anywhere from Oregon to Utah for Virginia. So many different states do this. And what it is, it's, it's creating a new revenue source. So we'd be cutting off the gas tax. So you're not going to be paying twice at the pump. But what we're seeing as, is we move towards the future for EVs. If you drive an EV, you're not paying that gas tax. So you're not paying for the road usage. So we need to make sure that everyone is paying their fair share, because we've seen those registration fees are not based on your typical 15,000 miles, 15,000 miles a year. So making sure that we're making sure that everyone is paying their fair share, quote unquote, because us and local government know that there's a lot more that has to do with that. So I know you're going to be hearing a lot about that lately and tonight. So just some of the few things we were able to do in our K through 12 budget, I serve on K through 12, we put $160 million for free breakfast and lunch for all students. And I know the word free gets tossed around a lot. But this is the first time that taxpayers, that we are taking the burden so that no child will ever have to go hungry in the state of Michigan. And this doesn't mean you have to qualify for any other way than just to be born in Michigan and go to a Michigan public school. So definitely making sure that all of our students, we are seeing that within just the last month from school starting. We're seeing teachers saying their students are more awake. We're seeing test scores going up. And I'm so excited to see what this program is going to deliver into the next year. So a lot of the things that we're working on, we're trying to make sure that they're sustainable, that making real differences in the state of Michigan. So I just wanted to make sure I took some time to introduce myself. It's been a crazy first couple of months, and I'm so excited to finally have been in here to introduce myself and to see any questions you may have from B.
Any questions?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. I will be back a lot more often with a lot more updates. So we finally got through the budget portion, and now we're moving towards the policy agenda. Most of the policy I work on have to do with cancer and healthcare policy. I'm a breast cancer survivor, and as we head into October, I'm going to give my plea to everyone at the age of 31. I was diagnosed with a very aggressive type of breast cancer. One of the things we're seeing is breast cancer, as well as colon cancer, are happening in people much younger than the recommended 40 years. So I will advise everyone, women and men, at 1.2% rate for me to get breast cancer, that's only a decimal point higher than men. So it can happen to you. Just make sure when you're in the shower, feel around. I don't know what I can say on TV right now. And if you notice any things that have changed, get to your doctor, because you are the best advocate for yourself. This tomorrow, I can't believe it's Wednesday already, I will be testifying in the Senate on a bill that I have been working on, which one is one of the main reasons I ran for office. It's called oral chemo parity, making sure that cancer patients can receive oral chemo at the same cost as IV chemo. As you may not be aware, oral chemo is not covered by health insurance companies. So we're going to remedy that situation. So for the first time in 19 years, we're finally going to get this passed.
Well, thank you so much. Such an informative presentation. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for being here. I got to say also that you are a top-notch singer. I listened to you, your rendition of the Star Spangled Banner a few months back, and it was fabulous.
Well, if you ever need me, I can perform as well. I have jokes. Children say I'm really funny, so I don't know what that means, but hey.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And if anyone has any questions, oh, I can, I don't know if I can do this.
Not during here, but you can give your information, and I'm sure they would love to have someone on one time.
Absolutely. So what I can do is I can come out there and answer some of your questions that you may have. You can always reach me at Samantha Steckloff, my full name, at house.mi.gov. Whether you live in the 19th District, your surrounding area, reach out. I'm here to help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There's some chairs out there, if anyone wants some alone. That was really nice of you to offer. She's got jokes. All right, thank you. Awesome. And so next we'll go to, so this is where we will, we'll do a presentation, and then we'll go ahead and open up public comment for the SAD. So first we'll start with the public hearing of necessity from the Bloomfield Hills Village Assessment District. And we're starting with Jennifer Worthman, and she's here from our appraising department.
I am. So tonight we're going to talk about the Bloomfield Village Phase 1 Road SAD, not to be confused with Phase 2. They just kind of staggered themselves a little bit. We're looking at Specialist Assessment District number 427, and this is our public hearing Phase 1 consists of part of Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village subdivision, along with Judson Bradways Bloomfield Village number 3. We're looking at 3.26 miles of public roads, including Dorstone Place, Tottenham Road, Yarmouth Road, Waddington Road, Pine Street, Tilbury Road, Tilbury Place, Westwood Drive, North Glenhurst Drive, and South Bradway Boulevard. Here's a map. So essentially, we're looking at everything east of Covington. And you'll see there's a few excluded parcels in there, but that's the general map. Again, we're looking at 3.26 miles of public road. The project consists of pulverizing the existing road and placing new asphalt pavement four inches thick over the aggregate base with full-depth cold milling, asphalt removal, total curb and gutter removal and replacement, total under-drain installation with sod and shoulders. Minor drainage improvements will be made to reasonably assure drainage of the pavement, and all shoulders and disturbed areas will be covered with topsoil and sod. Maximum five-foot approach will be constructed to the existing driveways to provide a smooth transition from the newly paved roadway where necessary. I've included a few pictures just randomly throughout the district, just to kind of show you the conditions that we're dealing with. And you'll notice in a lot of these pictures, you're not even seeing the curbs that currently do exist. The petition was confirmed by the township assessor. It was supported by 53.6% of the homeowners, representing 53.25% of the road frontage. Estimated project cost is $10,800, $10,685.16. There are currently 225 parcels in the SAD, 222 of those which are being assessed. The tentative assessment amount is $48,696.78, and that is per parcel that will be receiving a full unit of benefit. Assessments can be financed over 15 years, and the interest is to be determined after the bonds are sold. And we're looking at 1% above the bond rate. Our requested action tonight is we are looking to have Resolution Number 2 approved and schedule our second public hearing for final assessment on April 8 of 2024. We're looking to approve the agreement with the Road Commission of Oakland County to have them finalize the project, or finalize the plans and bid the project. Any questions?
Before we start our questions, we'll do the public-
Do a public hearing first?
Okay.
Sounds great.
So if anybody would like to come talk on this, please just come on up. You can line up if you want. Just give us your name, address, and-
I'm Mike Mulroy. I live on Westwood Drive in the village. I'm here, and I'll be upfront, I was opposed to the roads. I think the total cost is going to end up being somewhere around $54,000 per person. $10 million for 3.6 million, 3.6 miles worth of road seems excessive. But that's not why I'm here. So why I am here is today I learned that as part of this, they're going to be cutting down all the trees within five feet of the curb. That is going to do dramatic damage to the beauty of the village, and I highly oppose it. I'm also going to share with, I didn't plan to come tonight until one of my neighbors called and told me this. There's a lot, you know, there's 53% of the people that voted for this. There's a lot of people who are against this, the $54,000 being a big, big part of the reason. There's talk, and I've been recruited to be part of, I've been recruited to be part of a legal action fighting this assessment. And the grounds for that legal assessment are the fact that there was, I don't want to say threats, but there were strong arms, multiple visits paid to individuals' homes, you know, pushing them to vote for it. There's also a woman who claims that she was told she could have her generator approved if she voted yes for this road assessment. So I, they've been talking about this for several weeks now. I had no interest in being any part of it. I didn't want the roads. I'm going to, I'm sorry, I'm going to concede and say, hey, the roads are going to happen. Majority rules. I was in that camp until I heard that they were going to destroy the village by cutting down trees five feet from the curb, which are, two of them are on my front lawn. So, and let me just share with everybody the pitch that this group who wants to take legal action is taking. What they're saying is, hey, whether we can win this or not, we don't know. But it's going to cost you $3,000 a year to fund these roads. $3,000 out of every individual's pockets. What they're asking for is somewhere between $1,500 and $2,000. They're saying they can pretty much guarantee that they can postpone this road project and the collection of the taxes by at least a year. So what I'm looking, what I'm saying is, you know, if, if they're going to take legal action against the roads because of the $54,000, no, I'm not interested. But if you're going to destroy the village by cutting down all of the trees five feet from the curb, then I'm in. And what I have to gain from that is if they postpone it a year and I give $1,500 towards the, the fund, the legal fund, I save $1,500 for that one year. If they're successful, I save $54,000 over 15 years. I will say, I was on the village board, I was sued individually on the village board about eight or 10 years ago, and we racked up $100,000 worth of legal fees defending not only the village, not only the trustee, the trustee board, but also me individually.
Mr. Mulroy, can we wrap it up, please?
I've wrapped it up. That's it. So a lot of people unhappy with this. A lot of people furious about the loss of the trees.
Thank you.
And we'll take everybody's comments, and then we'll start discussion.
Hi, how are you this evening? My name is Susan Winters. I live at 1085 Waddington Street in the village. I've lived there for 15 years. The roads have always been damaged the entire time that I've lived there, but I can't say that it's from the residents that are causing this. We have many other people that are driving through our neighborhood that are causing the damage to these roads. And I believe that the board, which is a nice group of people, that we should be looking for contributions from other people, as opposed to having all of us paying for this out of our own pockets. This is a lot of money, and it's being done in phases. And in my opinion, it makes my property less appealable to anybody who might be looking to buy it than another house in the village that doesn't have this assessment on it yet. And so I believe that I am at a disadvantage being part of this group of people that's being forced. I did not vote for it. I don't want it. And I oppose it, because I do believe that my taxes are already way too high. And to personally have to pay for this, and my other fellow residents have to pay for this ourselves, when the roads get damaged on a regular basis by all sorts of construction, not going, not only going on in the village, but in the cities around us. For example, just out of the blue this past year, the road on the other side of us had a water main, a whole thing that was done, the whole street down. And there were tons of trucks and all sorts of different construction that was going on. And our roads, just the side of me and on, down my street, they're getting ruined by these trucks that are going through there. And when I asked the village people about this, or the trustee that had called me, if there's damage to these brand-new roads that we're paying now $3,500 or $3,800 a year for, we will have to pay for the repairs of our brand-new roads, which I think is crazy. And, you know, if you drive over near Seehome, just a few years ago, they shut down that road. They put in a brand-new road, and it was all brand-new for everybody. And then again, this year, they're ruining that brand-new road by putting in these new sidewalks that are over there. So I don't think that there's very good planning with regard to these roads. And I think over a 30-year period, they're just going to get ruined, and it's not, we're not going to have a benefit from it. Because I think in the village, our homes are valuable the way that they are. And I think we should be looking for money, contributions from other sources, like the woman that was up here before we started talking about this. Looks like the state has a fund for some sort of money, the city, the township, the county, some contribution, so it's not all on our shoulders. And the tree thing that this resident is talking about, that would ruin the value of my property as well. And I'm very opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Anstey. I live at 485 Westwood Drive in the village. And I'll let you know that I was also opposed to the project, primarily because my street really is in pretty good shape, so it doesn't need replacement. I granted that as you drive around the pink section of the village, there's many streets that do need repairs. But I would suggest that we need some other options as to repairing those streets. In the village news that has been sent out trying to clarify the project, they indicated that there was no other option to do this. And I would say that just a couple of years ago, on a section of Pine Street, they went through and milled it and paved it. We didn't pay anything extra for that. It came out of the township funds somehow. Just a couple of weeks ago, Clifton Street over by Detroit Country Day was repaved. That, well, it didn't come out of the village funds either. So I would say that there must be funds within the township to take care of some of these repairs. Can't be done instantaneously over time, but it will take time to do that. I understand that. My major complaint is that the voting process for this was not followed properly. The, we were told that the pink section, which is first, this section that we're talking about tonight, would be voted on, given a time period between March and June. It didn't get approved in that time period. In the meantime, the blue section, they started voting on that, and that got approved. So they went back, they continued beyond the timeline to go and, I've talked to numerous people, and they say, well, they, some people felt they were strong-armed or coerced into voting yes. But with that, they did not share all of the important information. They withheld information. So people, as I've talked to several people on the two streets, Waddington and Westwood, they've indicated that had they known that the trees were going to be removed, they might have voted differently. So I went to the village, one of the village meetings, nothing was said about the trees being replaced or removed. I went and talked to the village manager after the fact, and she told me that, yes, there have been identified 42 trees that would be removed. She couldn't tell me which 42 trees, and that information is not available to any of us. As I've ridden around the pink section, my conclusion is that the most of this, most of those 42 trees, or all of them, are on Westwood and on the first block of Waddington, the first block north of Maple Street. Again, as I said, you know, people that I've talked to, I've not talked to each and every person on those two blocks, but the ones that I have talked to, not one of them knew about the trees being removed. And they said that had they known that, they would have voted differently. So I guess my, my request is that we take another look at the vote. We look at other options to repair the streets. You don't have to go down four inches or six inches. You don't have to put in new curbs. I think everything can be done with a light milling and the repaving like they've done on Pine Street and on Clifton Street.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie McLean. I'm a resident of Bloomfield Village on Yarmouth Road. I've been a Bloomfield Village resident since 1997 and part of the Pink Special Assessment District, or SAD. I'm here today to say I strongly oppose the current village roads proposal and the SAD that has been put forward for the following reasons. My $700,000 home is being assessed the same amount as a $5.32 million home on four times the lot size. The SADs were created by the Oakland County Road Division, which has divided the village into five sections, each approximately two to three miles in length, paying attention to efficiencies for construction, but not considering the average lot size. The pink section is the longest, at 3.26 miles, which is the only section above the targeted two to three miles. I live in the most southern part of the pink section, where homes and lot sizes are average for the village. In contrast with the homes in the northern pink sections, which has estate-sized properties that are at least four times the size of mine and are valued at $3, $4, and even $5 million. When dividing the pink road costs equally, each home will be assessed $48,750, which, by the way, is $6,450 more than the blue section. Let me say that number again, $48,750. To me and many others, that is a big number and a debt I do not want to be forced to take on. Additionally, the assessment will be attached to the property and not the homeowner. I am certain that an assessment of $48,750 has a far greater of a negative impact on my $700,000 property than homes with values of $2 to $5 million. A potential buyer of a $3 million property may not think twice at the assessment, but I guarantee, my $700,000 home, it could be a deal breaker or end up costing off the sale price of the house. So either way, I pay. The estate homes need to have their own SAD, which would keep the assessments of homes more in line with the property values within. Trees, the big, beautiful trees. When people talk about the beauty of the village, it's the majestic tree-lined streets that sets it apart from the cornfield-turned subdivisions that are found in neighboring communities. It was stated that 42 trees from the pink section and 50 trees from the blue section will be cut down and will not be replaced. Now that, many would argue, has far greater of a negative impact on our property values than not having perfectly paved roads. It is my recommendation that the pink SAD be redrawn so that the assessment is more in line with the property values within, and that the method used to repair and or resurface the roads does not impact the trees. There must be a cost-effective solution to this, and we owe it to our community to continue to search for the resolution that is right for the larger majority of residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alfred, Alfred Gade. My wife, Deanne, as she says it, Deanne, and I and our family have lived at 591 Yarmouth Road for 47 years. And during that time, this issue of the roads has come up, and we favored the roads at one time when the prices were reasonable and we could see some cost benefit from it. However, at the current price that was mentioned before, and I agree with all of the comments, I think we're being pushed into a cost basis that will not benefit us. Now, I live on Yarmouth Street, 591 is one house off Cranbrook. Well, all of us know that Cranbrook Road is now the main thoroughfare between 15 Maple Road and 16 Horton Road. And the traffic on Cranbrook Road is exceedingly sharp during rush hour. Now, Yarmouth Road, where I live, connects onto Cranbrook Road at two points. So, we build this nifty road, a nice new road for rush hour drivers to discover as a shortcut. And they take Yarmouth Road instead of continuing on Cranbrook Road. Well, why is that so bad? Well, Cranbrook Road is under the maintenance and jurisdiction of the Oakland County Road Commission. They're gonna come in and make sure that that road is serviceable, even for rush hour traffic. But Yarmouth Road, in the 47 years I've been there, has been nothing but a quiet, resident-only roadway. And now you are shooting us in the foot by moving a lot of that traffic from Cranbrook Road onto Yarmouth Road. Please, don't do that. That's a bad safety issue, and you need to think about it. Now, we too are in the pink session, section, and there is this extreme difference between the price of the homes on our street from one end to the other. Now, having been there 47 years, I'm more in the category of the young lady who spoke before. But I wanna stay. I'm 85 years old, my wife is 83. I think you owe it to us to live in peace and harmony.[1020.13][1020.13](applause)
My name is Mark Intocley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I'm a precinct delegate in Bloomfield Township, Precinct 3. I've got a question regarding the removal of trees. Trees make wonderful carbon, carbon sinks. I would like to know which projects that were approved by the township are going to be used to offset the removal of those huge carbon sinks, and if that was even considered during the, the project proposal. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Justin Kobo. I'm at 427 Yarmouth. I was also opposed with the roads assessment here. I did just, I was browsing through the cities or the township's website today, checked out the newly issued, unmodified opinion issued by UHY, and it just, really, I commend this group for this, the outstanding financial position that this township continues to be in. And I was, I just became a resident here two years ago, so I think that this funding of this SAD was kind of assessed before. I have three young children, you know, $48,000 for me is pretty substantial, right? But, you know, we'll be able to figure it out, we have no other choice as it'll be assessed to our property and a lien. But, you know, looking at the financial statements that were just issued on the 22nd of this month, I mean, the MDNA kind of spells it out pretty substantially here, like, the general fund is currently in excellent financial position. There was $15 million transferred out of the general fund to a variety of different funds, which have relatively unrestricted committed fund balance essentially, and the commitments I know are under Gatsby 54 required by you guys to kind of commit and decommit those money. So throughout the financial statement, there's so many opportunities for creative financing. I'm not asking that the township pay for all of it, but, you know, a million dollars here and there can go a long way when we're talking on a $10 million assessment. Let's say ours is the highest one, so this project in a very affluent neighborhood is gonna cost between 50 and 60 million dollars. I looked throughout the fund balances throughout the township, and we have several different unrestricted monies, specifically within the general fund. I think there are, I didn't have much time to prepare here, but there was, there's $15.3 million of unassigned fund balance. I recognize based on your, the March 31st year-end, you need to have substantial funding. There's a roads assessment, which generates about $2.9 million from a special voted roads millage. Why couldn't any of that been assigned? There's an equipment and replacement fund, which has $9.8 million, which is a committed fund balance. What projects are those committed for? Can any of those be committed towards the village projects? There just seems to be like a significant amount of opportunity here for creative financing in a way that, you know, local governments have received a significant amount of government funding. Within your general fund, there's $4.4 million of unearned revenue, which represents your ARPA money that has not been flagged for anything. So I know that those, there's only five legal restrictions that you can't really use that money on. So there's opportunities here. I just asked this board here to consider some other source of funding for these $48,000 per parcel assessments that will be borne to us for 15 years. As I was telling my wife, if I was telling her I was gonna go on 15 years, for the next 15 years, $5,000 trips, I think that might be a bit egregious. And so here I am, now having to do that, mandatorily pay that every fifth, or every year for the next 15, just seems pretty excessive for a young family like myself and a couple of the other individuals here. So thanks for your consideration.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Well, I'm taking the other side. My name is Brian Cott. I am the immediate past president of the Bloomfield Village Association. The board of the association has been working on these, this, and the other projects for well over five years. We have followed the legal requirements of the Michigan statutes and your, and the township requirements in putting this together. I would point out that we have almost a 54% approval rating, and if this were an election, that would be a landslide. So I think that that's a, an important thing to take into consideration. In terms of the tree replacements, it's 42 of 301 trees that are budgeted, and that's about 14%. We, the board, the association board has formed a committee, which I am chairing, to investigate methods and funding to replace the trees that have been, that will be torn down. And we recognize that the, that the loss of the trees is as detrimental to the community and that they need to be replaced. I should also point out that this board recently approved a similar SAD for, we call it the blue section, which is another portion of the, of the village, and, and that this would be, I think, and it would be unfair for that one to, that portion of the village to go forward and this portion not to. And then finally, as to the equal assessment of, the assessment of each parcel, prorata based on the numbers, that is a township policy. And we, as, as those who put the SAD together, had nothing to do with that. That's part of the rules that are, that are being undertaken here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Boden Brown and reside at 435 Waddington. We've been residents for almost about 35 years. And I just, as to Mr. Cott's comments, I just want to make sure the people here know that Mr. Cott had a lead article on the tree issue, I don't know, a couple months or so back, while, while this whole process was going on. It was not a secret that was being kept from anybody. And I didn't come here to address the tree thing, because I thought, it's well, you know, had been adequately publicized, a committee's been formed. We have three beautiful trees that are close to the road. I think this gentleman, Mr. Anstey, knows that, on Waddington. We're in that first long block of Waddington, and we don't want to lose the trees. But I, if I was told we were gonna lose the trees, I would still have signed the petition in favor of this. This is a road project, and, and we're so far behind the curve in terms of this curve, so to speak. So I just, I think there's been some misinformation where the six, five feet from the edge of the road comes from. The road commission are the ones who came up with the, whatever, what was it, 42 trees out of the 300 and whatever, 14%. So if they used a five-foot standard, then so be it. I don't know where, but I'm not sure they would have come up with 42 using or applying the five, five-foot standard. So basically, over the last 35 years, we've witnessed a steady accelerating deterioration of the roads. We've seen multiple layers of asphalt laid down, periodic filling of potholes. This has gone on, you know, on a sort of sporadic basis. And all of that patching has simply compounded the problem. It may have worked for a few years at the outset, but it doesn't work anymore and just compounds the problem. Not to be overlooked is the drainage element of this project, another key element, new curbs and gutters. The original concrete curbs and gutters in front of our house and others have been totally buried over time by asphalt. Anecdotally, we had a water main break in front of our house several years ago, and the SWAT team from township or county came in, dug a deep trench, and lo and behold, a couple feet below the surface of our strip, strip lawn in front of our house was the original concrete curb and gutter that they hauled out. It was nowhere to be seen, and it was obviously non-functioning. So drainage, the pooling of water on our street and elsewhere. So this is a road project, this has been a drainage project, and I think this tree issue is a red herring, quite frankly. And we, I was talking to somebody who has three beautiful trees that we don't want to lose, but the roads and the drainage are critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Feel free to line up, because that'll make it go.
Thank you, everyone. Name Sean Metros. I've lived in Bloomfield Village for 20 years now, have four boys and raised them all there. I'm running the road committee and have been for about six or seven years now, unfortunately, since the last road plan failed. And I got involved for a couple of reasons. Number one is, to me, a safety issue. The roads are completely unsafe for riding a bike, taking a run, walking your dog. You could, I've got multiple examples of my kids coming home with bumps, bruises, scrapes, deep bruises, nothing broken, thankfully. Number two, it's an aesthetic issue. I do think it negatively impacts our residents and the property values in the village. And lastly, we're about 30 or 40 years past due to redoing the roads. We've been through this multiple times, the last one failed. The red herring last time was because we couldn't pass the lien on to the next homeowner. We've alleviated that issue. The problem is inflation. As we keep going forward, another seven years, because the next time we will bring this up will be another seven or 10 years, it'll be 30% more, and then 10 years from there will be 30% more. So we don't really, we can't control the cost. I understand it's a burden for people, it's a burden for all of us, but we're a community that needs to come together and get this project over the finish line. So thank you for your guys' help in working us through this process. It's been a process, it's taken a long, long time, and we're finally here. And we're excited that we got 56% in blue, almost 54% in the pink, and this will be the start of what will be a three-year project to get all five sections done. So I'm strongly in favor of it, and happy to speak with any residents that have any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Farah, I live on Yarmouth. I just want to address the committee. So I moved in last January, so I've been there for about a year and a half. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter, another girl on the way. So a young family, just like the gentleman from earlier. And I've listened to everybody talk, what really resonated with me earlier was the woman that was up here. What really resonated with me earlier was the woman that was up here speaking as a representative, and she said, "Michigan has the highest thaw-to-freeze ratio in the country, and we're thinking about paying over the next 15 years a road bill where we know that these roads will continue to deteriorate." So when I think about what the definition of a sunk cost is, I would, I would define it by this, this bill. You know, in addition to that, I'd like, if I may ask a question, is how, excuse me, the, the village is represented by one group, correct? So there's a president, there's trustees. So I guess what I'm getting at there is, is why are there sectioned off areas of the village? To me, by definition, this is called gerrymandering. And what they did was they isolated specific sections within the village even though they're represented by one entity. So for me, that is a concern. You know, there was a gentleman boasting nearly 54% support. If you think about it in an election in the United States, you know, we're, if we're going to elect a president, we're not doing this, you know, we're doing this as a nation, not, not specifically by, by each individual county. I mean, even though that does exist that way, I guess the point I'm saying is that 54% is representative of one area and not representative of the entire village. So I would ask for a recount. And then in addition to that, just lastly, why is there a level of discrimination against people that live on side streets such as Yarmouth versus Covington and Cranbrook? Those people aren't being assessed. I just spoke to a young family that moved in, and my joke was, hey, you're going to really enjoy that $47,000 bill. And they're like, oh, we're not going to have to pay that because we live on Cranbrook. So why, why am I having to face this? Again, young family, yes, I'm doing well for myself, but I, I come from very simple roots of Flint, Michigan, and I can guarantee you the roads there are much worse than the ones we have in the village, and I scraped my knees, but I'm still living. So I think for that reason, you know, for multiple reasons, and would love to investigate the gerrymandering accusation that I made here, you know, in front of this committee. But, I mean, realistically, to ask individuals to pay $45,000 to $55,000 out of pocket for no material lift in how our homes are viewed or valued, makes no sense to me. So, you know, whether it's looking at the other funds that this gentleman so eloquently presented, I think it's worth at least exploring further and, and knowing that we shouldn't be positioned this way. And I mean, you can see there's a lot of people here that are opposed to it. So those are my comments, and thank you for your time here.
Hi. My name is Sarah McAfee. I am the current president of the Bloomfield Village Association Board of Trustees. I can address the gerrymandering comment just really quick as an initial matter. If you look on the village roads website, what you can see is that, that, those sections were put together by the road commission based on what they thought made sense for, to do construction on each part.
Sarah, we're going to be addressing every one of these questions, so take your time for what you want.
Sounds good. Okay. So we are finally at this important juncture due to the dedicated work of volunteers in the neighborhood. The board recognizes that our roads are a problem to which there is no solution outside of us taking responsibility as homeowners. So we are finally, after many years, at this point where we can move forward toward construction with your approval. We've worked closely with the village manager to hold information sessions, small group meetings, prepare countless responses to residents on their questions as they arise. I've been there to see a lot of that work going on. So, you know, a lot, this information has been available with any phone call, with any browse of the website, or any question to any of the board members. Unfortunately, I do not live in the pink section of the neighborhood, but I can speak to how important this approval will be for when my section of the neighborhood is up for approval, which we hope to be sometime next year. And so I ask for your support of the special assessment district so that the village can continue the process of repairing our roads. Thanks.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mike Beauregard. I live on Yarmouth Road. I've lived in two houses that are five houses apart for the last 22 years. I have raised three children in the neighborhood. During that 22-year period, we've had two broken fingers and one broken arm on the road in front of our house. And I was not able to do anything about it until now. And so I got engaged when asked to volunteer, to speak to my fellow neighbors, to see what their opinions were, to get this program approved. I am one of the majority of our neighborhood that's asking you to approve this special assessment district. To be fair, some of the statistics that are coming out tonight are also sensationalizing. It is clear, based on the township's presentation at the beginning of the session, that approximately $48,000 is going to be the individualized cost over a 15-year period. The other side of that, that spectrum is a per-day cost of $8.50. I would do that and more to prevent the injuries that occurred in my family. Secondly, my driveway needed to be replaced when I moved into our second house. It was heaving, it had holes all over it. It was part of the reason why I got a discount on my house. The same thing is true when the roads in front of the house have the same kinds of potholes. When those roads are repaired, our values will surely go up as my house did when we repaired any kind of fundamental fixed asset associated with the property. Therefore, I strongly urge you to support the majority of our neighborhood in approving this special assessment district. Thank you.
My name is Tiffany Erickson, and I live at 2215 Tottenham Road, probably one of the worst roads in the neighborhood. You saw some of those pictures. There are layers upon layers upon layers. It's just deteriorated to the point where there is no drainage. I have walked the sidewalks every day for the last seven, 12 years that I've lived in the area, and I have tripped, I have fallen flat on my face because the trees are so close and they've uprooted the sidewalks. So there is a danger in having trees that grow so largely that the roots...
Can you aim up this way?
Sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to...
It keeps it less...
I'm not, I've never done this before. I, I just, I love trees. I planted 25 in the last five years. But I also know when they're extreme danger, and we have trees falling every year in our neighborhood because they're so grand and so old. They're beautiful, but they're a danger as well. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that I just, I need safety. I moved here 12 years ago, and a tree fell on our house, missed my son by this much in the window. So I, I am actually very scared of that. So safety is extremely important to me. And the, the neighborhood association fees, to be honest, I have lived all over the world, and these are the lowest I've seen in a, in a community like this, in one of the most expensive communities in the country. Maybe that's something we need to assess later so that we don't have this kind of a bill looking at us in the face. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah?
My name is Stephen Lewis. I am for the roads, and it's not without some secondary thoughts. I'm also cognizant of the fact of the cost associated with this. But at the end of the day, I also, you know, wishful thinking that financing is going to happen isn't going to produce it. So we're really at a crossroads of, are we going to sit here and watch the roads continue to deteriorate? I've lived here for 23 years, and the amount of deterioration has just been really significant. I can't imagine what it's going to look like seven to 10 years from now if we do nothing. This, to me, is really just a return on investment. You know, lacking the funds from some mystical source, we have to make a decision as village owners, are we going to get a return on investment on our property? So that's the way I look at it. And I see the only way that we're going to get a viable return on this really nice property that we have in the village is by maintaining it. And I think by maintaining our roads, that's part of our obligation, and that's really all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Weisdonborn. I'm the village manager in Bloomfield Village. I think what you've heard tonight is it's hard to argue that we don't need a solution for our roads. Our potholes have potholes. We don't have curbs that you can see anymore. The drainage is negatively impacted by that. We've been told multiple times over the last 20 years that the solution is not another overlay, but the solution is to rebuild the roads. And at this point, after all these years, 53% of the residents in this district of the village have voted, signed the petition, and asked, spoken in saying, let's, it's time to do just that. We've gotten to this point by the hard work of volunteers, many of whom have spoken tonight, taking their personal time, calling, emailing, texting, visiting multiple times to different houses. And I also visited multiple, multiple times to various houses, and I think that was less of an attempt to strong-arm than an attempt to actually have an opportunity to discuss and to answer questions. As an association, we've made a very substantial investment in educating our resident about the history of our roads and the SAD process. We've launched a separate website, villageroads.org, where we have substantial information about the history of our roads, what the current proposal is, the solution that we're proposing, how the SAD works. And we've kept that updated as questions came up throughout the process. We didn't know everything on day one, and as we became more educated and as questions came up, we kept that website updated with blog posts so our residents would have the information as we had it about the, the process. We also held over a dozen small group meetings so that people could come and ask their questions in a small discussion-type forum, maybe easier than a town hall type of a, of a, a situation. We held a two-hour forum with the road commission where Mark Metzler talked about the construction process and how that would work, and answered a lot of resident questions there. And we've kept our residents informed with timely emails, articles in our village bulletin, and discussions at our last two annual meetings about the roads. So there has been plenty of opportunity for any resident that had a question and needed more information, to get that information from those sources, or emailing me, calling me, whatever. I was available all the time to answer questions. Our goal really has been to give the information that our residents needed to make an informed decision. I think our residents have spoken clearly in support of this, and I would ask that you would support it today with a positive vote to support our SAD. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi. I'm Jeff Thompson. I hadn't intended to speak today, but after hearing a lot of the different back and forth, I guess I'll just talk a little bit about what I've heard. 812 Waddington is where I live. Trees, while I think trees are really important and something good for our neighborhoods, I too witnessed, as I walk around, the heaving trees near the sidewalk. I think that's a bit dangerous. It's a double-edged sword because it's also too bad to lose some of the trees. Life is often a balancing scale, and you have to look at what you get out of it. So property values, I heard some people say they feel that that wouldn't be an improvement. I mean, I would strongly disagree with that because, you know, the, the roads are in horrific condition. I mean, mine and many other roads are. So, you know, if you have a brand-new road as opposed to a road that's really in beat-up condition, what do you think a homeowner would consider when they, when they come to, you know, look at your home? It's, you know, a no-brainer there. I don't have one of the higher property values in the, in the neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood and everything. But ours is, as a team player, I would, I'm willing to, that's the way it was done. That's, you know, my vote is to go along with it. I know certain other people are going to pay less, but that's okay. Inflation is only going to get worse, right? You've seen the price of a stamp, right? You looked at the stock market back 20 years ago. You can see that gas is not necessarily going down over the last 20 years. So it's only going to get worse. And then, you know, the heroic job of, of our village association and manager has been, you know, something that's, everybody should take note of because it wasn't, it's not been easy, and it's failed many times. And finally, thanks to somebody that really has, has done a great job, it may go through. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I have a question.
Sorry. We're looking for anybody who hasn't spoken yet, and then we'll address everybody's questions that they've already asked.
Hi. I'm Beth Janks. I live at 2572 Covington Place. I just really want to kind of recap some of the comments made tonight. Thank all the folks that did volunteer to go ahead and do the work, to do the research, to fix the roads. The roads are in very bad shape. They are public roads, and I noticed that was on your very first slide, and many folks use our roads besides us. So I would implore you all, as the township, to do some research. Is there, are there grant monies out there to help subsidize the costs for the homeowners? Perhaps, you know, the state of Michigan, there might be some DNR resources to replace the trees that have to be removed. Can we decrease the width of the roads? In some places, I'm not a civil engineer, my daughter is, but I'm not, so I don't know how detailed and what that would entail to do something like that, to save some of the trees. But I think that, you know, as a community, we want to come together and come to some type of resolution. However, the cost is prohibitive, and the loss of the trees, it is going to affect especially Bradway, where, you know, we've got the canopies going across. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone during public comment, just announce where you live. So, please come up to the, yeah, and just please give your address.
You know, the other limit is that must relate to this topic, so...
Yeah. It has to be the SAD.
Excellent. I live at 555 Hub Cross. My name's Coley Conley. I've agreed that the roads need, something needs to be done, but regarding the trees being cut down, if you look down our street, if you take away, I think the property values would decline a heck of a lot more from having the amount of trees that be cut down compared to having a new road. I just would like to see some before-after, you know, type picture, especially like Bradway, like talking about the canopies. If you see how the canopy on the Bradway is right now, how would it look if you took down a bunch of trees? And I don't think that has been really strongly communicated. And I think if you look at our street on Hub Cross, if you look at the tree-lined street and how aesthetically beautiful it is, if you take those down, it, I do think that would, you know, bring down our property value more so than like having a new paved street. I do think that's something that needs to be better communicated and looked into before you do pass something like this. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. We're going to go ahead and close down a public comment. I have, excuse my, if I misspelled your name or say your name wrong, I apologize, but we're going to try and address every one of the questions before we open the discussion. I'm going to try and cover, I'll be able to cover most, but I might need you to for a few. This actually, one of the hardest things we do every time is SADS because it's never a solid, you know, 90-percenter. It is what you actually have today, nine verse nine. So even the public comment kind of goes with that 50% rule that we usually have. The first I'll start with, and again, I'll try and address them so that this also helps with our discussion. The first one was Mark Mulroy, who was saying that, he was asking about the trees, but the mention of the legal action. Again, we would never say that you can't sue. We just always warn people that, just remember that it is us as residents that pay the legal fees. And we did have a water sewer lawsuit from some conspiracy theories. It cost us as residents over a million dollars to fight it. So just remember, tax money pays for our lawsuits. So make sure you have a really good case before you sue somebody, please. So make sure you have a really good case before you sue somebody, please. That's all we ask. But yes, absolutely, everybody has their right to due process. The next was Susan wants others to pay in regards to any grants. And that mentioned a few times, so I'll mention it this one and then others. We as township get no money for roads because we don't own them. The county owns the roads, so state and federal funding is available to them. Currently, the SADs available in Oakland County for their roads is $250,000 for 62 communities. As you know, that doesn't even cover your one project. So the funding available through the county to cover their roads doesn't exist. And that is, with all their ARPA funding, that is with all the grants they can get from the state and feds, they're not coming to help us. And we say this as residents, all seven of us are here with you. We are all frustrated that we also have to help with county items. This is a county road. The county has allotted $250,000 to cover 62 different cities, villages, and townships. If we were a city, we would own it, which is also why we'd probably have much higher than 10 mils for our operating taxes. But our road millage goes towards potholes, and we also plow all the roads because, again, the county doesn't do it quite to a level that we would expect as residents. So it is our, that millage covers to have a road department to do all of your plowing during the winter and then all of the spot. You've seen people out there doing potholes, some mini overlays. That's basically all through our road millage. So that is what that covers. The next one, also, if you do invest, the few, the millage that we do get for the road, we put a lot into also now cape sealing. Instead of, we used to just focus on potholes, now we figure if somebody's going to invest in their own road, we're going to help protect it as long as possible. So we've taken some of the pothole money away and put in what's called cape sealing. Some others that I'm sure the gentleman in the back from DPW can talk about, but basically, we help protect the newer roads in your investment by coming through and helping with filling in cracks, and it extends the life of your roads because you invested in them. Those are who we're going to basically protect going forward. Next, we have Brian. I think he basically said, "We were very honest, your street was okay." That was a very honest answer, I'm just going to let that one. Next, he did ask about the overlays. And again, we don't have the money that we used to get from the county or the state to do any of those overlays. It's just our road millage now. Leslie, the $48,000, that I'm going to actually come to you on with that of how we do the policy of the unit benefit. And it does allow for transferring, it does become negotiable. That is actually something that the previous supervisor went to the state to get done so that townships under us, if you went through RCOC, it wouldn't be transferable. But going through us, you not only get, all we do is basically pre-finance and help, but it allows you five extra years of payments instead of 10 if you go directly through the county. And it also allows you to possibly transfer that. So it no longer has to be paid right at the sale. You can negotiate it. That is something that is unique to going through a township.
With respect to the unit method of allocation of costs, basically, when you challenge a road SAD, you have to file a lawsuit with the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and there's a presumption of validity in favor of the township. One of the, there's only a couple of recognized methods by the Michigan Tax Tribunal that they recognize as being legitimate ways of allocating costs. One is the road frontage. That's not the preferred way. The preferred way is a unit of benefit based on whether the lot is developable or not. And generally, if it is, then it gets one benefit. The fact that one lot has a house on it that costs $5 million, and another house, or another lot has a house on it that costs $700,000, that never comes into the mix. That isn't a recognized way of establishing a special assessment for a road millage. So the township is utilizing the preferred method of allocating costs in the unit method. That's the explanation for it. There are, this is one of the two ways, one of the two methods recognized for road SADs, and it's the preferred method in terms of the Michigan Tax Tribunal, so.
I knew you'd be more eloquent than I would be on that one, so thank you. Next is Alfred, mentioned about the high costs. You're correct, they go up every year. From our projects, there's not a single project that's cheaper now than it was last year. Everything will go up, labor goes up, materials go up. So if we as residents are waiting for the roads to get cheaper, that sadly is just not going to happen. The best we can do is keep fighting with the county to give us more money towards it. Just right now, like I said, right now, we went from zero allocation for SADs to $250,000 throughout the entire county. So we're, it's still a very long fight, and I don't foresee it happening in the next immediate future. Next with Justin, mentioning about looking at the township. You are correct, we do have some fund balances. We do have our total budgets, when you look at them all together, is about $110 million. So we are required to have a certain amount for safety of continuation of government that you do have to have. You have to prove that you have some funds that keep things going if, God forbid, we had COVID and a recession all at once and going back-to-back. So a lot of those are earmarked for certain things, such as public safety and other things that will have to keep going. With the ARPA, although we did receive $4 million, there have, it has almost all been allotted. It doesn't get taken out till things are actually charged to us. So for example, one item, fire department, if you've been following us for years, fire and police vehicles are very expensive. So the ladder truck was $1.8 million, but it takes three years to build. So you will not see that $1.8 million come out of that reserve for about two more years. And then some of the other items are anywhere from $500,000 to $800,000. So again, we have to hold them in these balances or areas, but that doesn't mean that they haven't already been earmarked. They just, we, they don't come out until it's charged. And that, if anybody's interested, there are some of our ARPA update, there was one about a month ago. But the most recent, if you are interested in seeing what we've been doing and what has come of some of the resident studies, you can look on our website and see what that money will be spent on or is already planned for. Next, we have Jeff Thompson. Was he yes? Brian Cott mentioned almost 54%. That for sure is one of the higher ones, to be honest. We've had some there at 50.01. So anything at 51 and higher is actually one of our higher ones. But he did point out the trees. That is something that the village is taking on to replace and work on that. That is one of their projects, so I'll leave them to focus on that because I am just not well-versed enough to speak on that. With Bowden, the trees being addressed, so the RCOC of five feet, yes, that is, the RCOC is, Mark Metzler here tonight?
He was unable to come.
Okay. And that is within theirs. They do try and avoid them, whether it's sidewalks. For example, I've had a sidewalk on my property about 20 years now, and they went around a tree. So whenever we can avoid trees, or the RCOC can, they will. So the ones that they've taken out, I'm guessing, wouldn't have even survived if they would have left because the roots usually going under the road would still kill it in the long run and then would fall on someone's house, which I think someone mentioned, that danger. So they usually will only take ones that, after it's been cut nearby, they wouldn't survive. That would also be with DTE. The reason we don't have a lot of buried lines is because that means taking out every single tree along the easement. So that's, that same thing, anything that wouldn't survive, they would take. Next, we have Sean, was part of the road committee. Kathy was part of the road committee. Steven, I started writing in different ways, sorry. The one about the gerrymandering, so that is picked by the RCOC. There's only a certain amount of miles every year that contractors can do. Also, you don't want them driving over new roads. So after you fix a section, you don't want contractors going anywhere near it. So about three miles, three and a half is about the max that they do for an entire season. So that contractor, that is all they're doing that season mostly. And they purposely picked ones that would be avoiding each other. So it's not like you do this when you drive through it, you do this when you drive through it. Instead, it was, how can they figure it out so that their new contractors don't touch what was just done? So as not to ruin the brand-new road that would have gone in first. So that was how Mark explained that they broke out the five different, was to keep them under a certain size and to also keep them to not touch while the ones are going. Next is sectioned off, that's the gerrymandering. What else do we have here? That was, I figure, no offense to the yeses, but I figure you were very honest and said you were on the committee, so I didn't need to answer any of those, sorry. Sectioned-off area, I think, did I miss any?
Danny, did you want me to touch base also on the last comment about the gerrymandering? He also wanted to touch base on the parcels that are not included in this one.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
So you'll see on the map, primarily going down Cranbrook, there is a section of parcels in there that are not highlighted in gray. Parcels are excluded if they have no property lines that touch a road that is being repaved. So the parcels that you see that are still in beige, running around Cranbrook, they will not be included in the SAD because they do not have any property lines that touch a road that is being repaired and conceivably never touch a road that needs to be repaired. So that's why you see that. On the intersections, some of those houses do have driveways that possibly also exit onto Cranbrook, but they do have the ability or capability of being accessed from one of the roads that are being repaved. So that's why you see a little bit of discrepancy in the parcels that run along Cranbrook there, as well as a couple of them that run along Covington.
And then to piggyback on that, sorry, sir, we don't, unfortunately, all the public comment questions have already ended. I'm so sorry, but the public comment questions.
I had a question at that time, I asked you and said I had a question.
But you had already come up, and I'm so sorry, once, you had already come up and had your questions. And I apologize, but we don't do debates back and forth. We listen to everyone's questions all at once, and then we answer them and go from there. So at this point, we're in the board discussion part.
Because people mentioned about sidewalks being fixed and staying private.
So I'm so sorry, but we're not going to be able to debate. I'm so sorry. So another thing to piggyback on what you just mentioned about why do some get done and some don't, there's something called feeder roads. So like Gilbert Lake, for example, or Cranbrook or Covington, these are roads that the general public uses that doesn't live in your neighborhood, which, as people have mentioned, there are people that are in your neighborhood that aren't part of your neighborhood. So not services that are helping you, like when we have Amazon come to our house, or we have construction on our house. That is specific to our own neighborhoods. But people cutting through for rush hour on feeder roads, that affects your neighborhood, and it's not part of your daily activity. So the limited funds that the county uses, they focus on mile roads, north and south, east and west mile roads, and feeder roads to make sure that there's always availability for public safety, for police, fire to get through certain areas. But those are the ones that they focus on because it's also bringing in the general public that is not part of your neighborhood. So I think they do that to kind of ease some of the burden, but unfortunately, they're not helping with the rest of our roads.
Well, and I know Mark would piggyback in at this point as well and mention that the roads are warranted. I mean, they, the Road Commission warranties these roads. They are built to current standards to withstand construction trucks and everything else. So that goes into it, too. I mean, I know a couple of people express their concerns as far as construction or this or that. The Road Commission stands behind the road that they're built. They are built to withstand that type of traffic.
And it's today's standards, so how big the trucks are now versus back in the day. You know, when your roads were built before, leaving the ones underneath, they were built when we didn't have Amazon, Uber drivers, and Grubhub and everybody coming to our neighborhoods. So they're built to a higher level of volume and to a heavier level of construction and deliveries. So they're expecting it's a lot more than the regular sedans and SUVs that are driving. Now there's a lot of delivery trucks. So the standards are a lot higher than they were back then. Did I miss any others? Because I know you were furiously written them.
No, that was the one I was in mind. And you did address already briefly the topic about, there are fund balances, that the township has saved tax revenue and dedicated to different capital projects or whatnot. And, you know, I just want to mention that a little bit. I mean, the township, you know, is, has a large number of neighborhoods that are exact same situation as this. Many other neighborhoods are going through a SAD process. Many neighborhoods were built so that, and that the roads are just near their natural end of their life. And the township simply does not have the tax revenue or the tax base to support all of the requests that could come in to repair and replace the neighborhood roads that are needed. You can just imagine how many hundreds of miles of neighborhood roads there are.
About 275.
275. So yours are some of the roads that certainly one could argue are the worst and have had so many other overlays and retreading and so forth. I can't even imagine, I mean, that, think about sort of sending money down a hole, just doing another patch on top of the situation of these roads. I couldn't imagine a way to, you know, throw away, conserve a million dollars faster. So yes, the township is in good financial shape because of the hard work of long-term board members and long-term boards through the past, but, you know, those funds could not possibly cover the cost of repairing all the neighborhood roads that really needed. I wish they were different, but it is, that's exactly what it is.
How many are going on right now? 13?
Yeah, we had a report a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago.
We currently have, if we break out the five sections of the village, we currently have 10 that are in a stage of the process. Kirkway would have made 11, and they are in their construction phase now. And then we also have some water, we have a water one coming down. So we have about 11 or 12 SADs in some stage of the process currently.
Outside of these five?
Correct. No, that's including these five. Yeah, that's including.
So then part of it is with, and again, we as a township only can go up to 10 mils. So people have even said, "We'll just raise our taxes." We can't. Statute legally, unless someone did an SAD, which I think if anybody remembers, I was against doing an SAD over 10 mils when that was suggested before in 2019. Our job is to stay fiscally responsible under 10 mils, which is what you should expect from us. So other than doing a township-wide SAD, which you would raise everybody's taxes to cover the cost, and then we try and address, there's probably more than 275. I know Cory's back there if you have the exact number, but it's approximately 275 miles of roads. That would be one heck of a tax increase. And again, this really is the county, and it's frustrating. We are, I don't know of anybody up here who is, who thinks that this is fair. And it's, it's not something that you'll ever hear me say that it is fair because this is a county road, and the county's decision that they just don't have the funding for it, so they're just not going to do it. And we've watched that it's not going to change. Because as you've all pointed out, it's been going on for decades. So I wish they would come to our benefit and to our, to our help, and they're not right now. And I just don't see that changing. And when we've reached out to state, they will give funding to the county, it's a matter of where the county puts it. So I highly suggest we all reach out. I know the seven of us already do, but strength in numbers. Reach out and say, "You have more ARPA funding out there, please give it. Give it to roads." So that's, I'm going to stop talking, let everybody else talk.
So just a couple of comments. As a 35-year resident, I moved here on dirt roads, and I was a young, new homeowner, I was probably the youngest in my subdivision. And within the first three months, they said, "Well, we want to get paved." And my husband and I were like, "What? How does this work?" And they considered something called chip coat, which was next by the township because it was very short-lived. Long story short, it took us two to three years. We did pave. Somehow I became the road paving chair. I understand the work that went involved, the knocking on doors, the explaining. I went to every house, whether they, I knew they were in favor or they weren't in favor to answer questions. You know, it's a difficult process. We have now, it's been 35 years since we paved our roads, and they need it again. And the last time we tried to do it, we had 51% no and 49% yes. But the one thing I can assure you is that the price only goes up. Ours has more than tripled, and we did not get it approved. And it's very, very difficult, and it's a hardship for some, but yet it is part of your value. When we did it, I'm on a big corner. I had the highest assessment because at that time, they said it was by frontage. So we paid up to 30% more than the rest of my neighbors, and we accepted that. Now they do it based on benefit. In some ways, seems more fair, but I went along with the way that they were doing it at the time because there was no other choice. So I hear all of you, and I understand, but the only thing we can be sure of is that this is the way it has been for decades and decades. If we lived in a city, we would probably have a lot higher taxes that would pay for, you know, the road replacements. But the only thing we can be sure of is that it's not a fun situation, but it will improve the look and the desirability of your neighborhood, and it will go up in cost, to put it off as, I think, it's been documented by your subdivision in particular. So that's all I have.
You have to add one more thing that wasn't brought up here, but it was brought up either at the last one for here or Kirkway. Some people said, "This will raise my taxes." We do not raise your assessment based on the SAD. So I just want to make sure that is out there, that even though this might improve, it may improve the value of your home, it may make it easier to sell, it may do all that. Our assessing department does not say, "Hey, they have new roads." This is Our assessing department does not say, hey, they have new roads, this is more valuable. We don't do that. So that came up either at Kirkway or the last one, so I just wanted to make sure that was out there, too.
Well, another thing that has changed over the years was it used to be not transferable. And so when we refinanced our house, because we bought it a high mortgage interest rate, and the mortgage person said, no, you will not have to refinance that loan that you have, they were mistaken. And when we went to the closing, they said, well, we'll just loan you that extra money at 9% interest, even though we were paying 6% interest on the roads. So we had to pay it off. That's no longer the case, and it would transfer to the new owner.
Negotiable, not automatic.
Negotiable, but it was not negotiable then. And we were, flat out had to pay it off at a higher interest rate, which was unfortunate. But that's another thing that has, has actually improved.
What else?
Thank you. Both of you really answered the questions well, by the way, all three of you. This is, I know, always a difficult, difficult thing to go through. A lot of us have been through many, many SADs, and they're never pleasant, never pleasant for the homeowners. They can be contentious, as I know, although you've all really handled yourself well in this process and presented yourself well. When you have basically 53% who are in favor and 47% opposed, you're going to, it's pretty close. And it really came across this evening, which is something that, unfortunately, this is just kind of what, well, as you stated, Danny, 53% is pretty high.
One of our highest.
It's one of our higher ones. So it's just, when you, there's, there's not a lot that we can do as far as opposing this one. There is such, you know, 53% in favor. I know it's very expensive, and I wouldn't be happy about the assessment either, but unfortunately, through inflation and delay, and that's part of what's contributed to the cost, it gets more and more expensive. I certainly am, you know, concerned about the trees, tree removal and tree replacement. Certainly, we, it's not our, we can't get involved in any type of lawsuit with that. However, I'm pleased to hear that the village manager and the village board are involved in trying to make some plans in replacing the trees that they can and working with the residents. I think it's really important, and it's certainly very important to me, that the tree issue be addressed. And I was pleased to hear that it's been out there in emails and in discussions, because it's certainly obviously important to the residents. So that's about it.
So I'll just add, you know, I have a couple of comments. So first, you already kind of touched on the revenue, but I just want to state it again to be really clear. The township has fixed revenue, which is the property taxes. And it sounds, you know, from the gentleman who's talking about the funds that we have, it sounds like, oh, you know, the township is flush with money, and why can't you just chip in a couple of million to reduce our assessment? And I think it's important for people to recognize that if we end up having another housing crisis, and the prices go down, and the property values go down, and turn our revenue goes down, well, our costs are only increasing. The cost of having employees, the cost to run the township, the cost to buy public safety vehicles and equipment that our firefighters and police officers need. And so what those reserves are there for is the rainy day fund, right? If that day ever comes, the township has to be in a position to continue to run and provide the services that all of the residents expect. Beyond that, I'll say, I've lived in the township. I'm about to be 36 years old. I've lived here ever since I was 10, so, you know, 25-year resident. I live on a private street, just three houses. You still can see our drain and our curb, and we are looking at having to repave, because it's only going to get worse and worse. And just in that condition, which is nowhere near the village, and I live right off of Corrin Road, so I'm right by the village, we're looking at $30,000 to $40,000, which is going to be about $10,000 per, per house on just a three, three-house street. So when you're talking about miles of road, that's going to have a big price tag on it. And certainly, anybody who knows me knows that I'm a huge environmentalist. I have, I'm a master gardener through the extension of Michigan State University. So trees and the importance of the trees is not lost on me. But somebody mentioned, you know, life is, you have to balance. So on one hand, we're going to have the tree loss, but on the other hand, we have a deteriorating road, which is only going to continue to deteriorate. So what is the solution? There really isn't a solution that's going to make everybody happy. But in this situation, I do think that safety has to come first. And frankly, if we let these roads go, safety is going to become more and more of an issue. And just looking at statewide, anybody that lives in Michigan knows our roads across the state are horrible, and we had a governor run on an initiative to fix the roads. And part of how she's fixing the roads now is bonding, right? So she's borrowing money for the state of Michigan to be able to fix the roads. So the state, the state of Michigan doesn't even have enough money to maintain the public roads that we have, let alone trip in money at the local level for the subdivision roads that we have. So certainly, it's not the message that I want to have to give, but as somebody who ran for a state office in the last cycle, I got really deep into the, the road funding. And frankly, the, the way that the state does it is just, it needs to be revisited. But that's not something that we can do at the local level. So I would implore you to reach out to your state representatives and see if there's a way that they can restructure the road funding, because frankly, RCOC, which is the road commission of Oakland County, they're doing what they can with the money that they have, and it's not going to be enough money to, to pave our subdivision streets. So the last comment that I'll make is with regard to the village and the tree loss, you see that this is no small endeavor, and I think that anybody that lives in the village, part of why they love to live there is the community, the environment, and that in part is the trees. And I think that there are stewards in the village who are recognizing that this is going to be a problem. And so I was happy to hear that they're already working towards creating a fund, getting some money to replant those trees. Certainly, that's, that is going to be a loss to the township, but when you are putting safety, you have to put safety first, I think that the tree loss is something that we're just going to have to, we're just going to have to deal with. And hopefully, we'll be able to replant those trees and continue to have beautiful canopies throughout the village. So thank you. And I appreciate all of your comments. And again, I know that it's not easy. I myself, you know, I actually live on a private road, so I don't even get the extra, you know, road plowing that, you know, some of you enjoy, so I.
You also don't get an SAD option.
That's right. We don't get an SAD option, and so we just have to deal with it as, as our neighbors, although I'm lucky, we're just three houses and hopefully, although we didn't do it this year, so we're putting it off, and I'm just waiting with bated breath to see what's going to happen next year and see what those costs are going to be, because as everybody knows, the cost of everything is going up and up. And unfortunately, there's no magic solution here, so we're just doing the best with what we have.
Thank you for pointing that out, because I always leave them out of my count, because that's not who we have to cover. But there's about 21 miles of private roads, meaning they maintain them themselves, they fix them themselves, they plow them themselves. And that is fortunately what you're in right now, but.
Yep.
So there's no SAD process, there's no plowing, there's no maintenance, no public dollars are spent on those kind of roads.
I just wanted to ask Jen a question. So some of the people talk about the trees and the roots getting into the roads. Is that, is that a common problem there?
In the village?
Yeah.
It is. And Mark had pointed out in prior meetings that that is a big part of the removal of the trees, as well as the disrepair of the roads. There's so many layers of that road that it is a huge part of the cost, is the amount that has to be excavated and taken out in order to just start with a fresh base. It has to be built back up, so the roads aren't six inches lower than people's yards. And in that process, the roots of all these trees that line the roads are going to be cut. There's no way around it. So then what happens in turn is, once you cut those roots, I think somebody pointed out, then it ruins the constitution of the tree, and then you wind up with trees that are dying, trees that are falling. So it is really the main reason that those trees have to be removed.
Right. So that's the, the bulk of the trees that are being removed?
Correct.
Are the ones that are too close to the road?
Correct.
And that are causing damage to the road.
Yeah.
Okay. And I.
Be damaged when they fix the road, because they have to go so deep.
Right. Or they would, the tree would be damaged as a result of repairing the road, because those roots would have to be removed.
Right.
Okay. So I just, I had that note here. I'll just echo what everybody else has said. This is one of the least favorite parts about sitting up here, is going through these SADs, because I wholeheartedly agree with you that we should be getting money from the state or the county or the federal government. I mean, they're printing money for everybody else, why not for us? But unfortunately, that's not the way it works. PA 51, that trustee Faqui was talking about, is how the state allocates its road funding money. Most of the road money, or a disproportionate amount of the road money, goes up to the UP and Northern Michigan, because even though they have fewer residents, they've got a lot more miles of roads. And so I was, as I got into it, look, you know, since I've been on the board, learning about that, that's been a very frustrating thing. And, you know, you talk to our, our elected representatives, you know, Sam Stekloff or, you know, any of the others that represent this community, they will tell you that, you know, they're trying to get, get that changed, but it's, you know, it's been a problem for many, many years to try to, to get that changed. And even then, I don't know how much more money the counties would end up getting, and then it's how's the county decide, because ultimately, the county owns our roads. And how do they decide to allocate that money? You know, like Supervisor Walsh said, that they're going to, they're going to spend it on feeder roads and mile roads and make sure that those roads are in good repair for, you know, public safety, as well as the bulk of the traffic. So unfortunately, as a township, that leaves us in a untenable position of having to fund the repair and replacement of our own roads. One thing I can add is the treasure is that, you know, somebody made mention of the strong financial position that the township is in. One of the benefits of that is that we have a AAA credit rating, and we have the lowest borrowing costs of any municipality in Michigan, or, you know, the same with Birmingham and a couple. There's only three or four that have AAA ratings. So the last bond that we went to market with, which was Kirkway, I think it was, the bonds came in at a little under 5%. And that's what we charge. That includes, you know, our administrative costs of collecting the money and paying it.
And at 1%?
Well, that includes 1%.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the rate on those bonds, that the, the residents are being charged is 4.7%. You know, even in today's interest rate environment, that's a pretty good rate. Everyone has the opportunity, before we go to bond, to prepay the entire assessment for, for those that are able and want to, and avoid the interest. But otherwise, you would have the ability to get it assessed yearly for 15 years. You could prepay it at any time. But you'd be able to assess it at, or spread it out at that rate. So that is one of the benefits of, of us doing the SAD rather than the road commission, is the ability to use our AAA credit rating to get an extremely low cost of borrowing. So I think everything else that my colleagues here have said pretty much sums everything up. You know, this is, this is uncomfortable, because we agree that it's unfair, but the law kind of ties our hands, because if it got more than 50% approval and the roads, there's a demonstrated need, we pretty much have to approve it. So unless I'm mistaken.
Under the township's SAD policy, that is the case.
Yeah. So that's, that's what I have.
And the reason that policy came about is because you would have communities that put in all the effort, did everything, and there was still no guarantee that all that work would be worth it. So part of that came where it is really uncomfortable to vote on something where you know half the people in that room are going to be upset, and their, their livelihoods are affected. So it, it made it just kind of whoever showed up that day, we might vote no. And that's not fair to all of the people that voted yes, which is a majority, and we do live by, you know, most of us up here, we're within a percent or so. So it's, it's the hardest part. It's the worst part of being up here.
Is there one last thing to say? Or a couple left? So I want to commend everybody who's been here and had a comment and participated in this process. And I understand the feelings that you have regarding this. My community has gone through this process as well. We failed during a time when interest rates were under 2% and companies were dying to get, to get these projects. And my community now, most that I know, certainly wish they had said yes. Thank you for participating. Thank you for coming here. I want to thank the village leadership for their hard work on this and their well-run information campaign that, that continues to this day. And lastly, I can find, I can think of no better way to make a decision on this other than the majority sentiment that's been expressed, and I intend to vote to support it.
I just have one additional comment, something that wasn't mentioned. It's not going to help you guys, unfortunately. But having done this myself, my subdivision was just, we were actually dirt, so they narrowed the road, and they only put concrete curb at the corners for erosion. But my understanding, and Jen can confirm this, is that, and we have culverts and drainage that way, is that you are also getting improved concrete curb and gutter throughout, which will improve your drainage, it will move the water off the roadway, make, you know, less probably ice and buildup. It will, it will show you a lot of improvements in terms of, you know, water flow, drainage, certainly aesthetics. And, and, you know, the first thing I said when I saw the previous subdivision that got approved in the, or section, I should say, of, of the village, was, wow, that, that was higher than a normal cost. But it is because you're getting the concrete curb throughout and the gutter, which a lot of neighborhoods like mine does not get that. And so that does drive the cost higher, but it is also a benefit and an improvement. And having driven through the, those roads, I used to work at Corrin School for years and years and years, I never knew you guys had curb and gutter till I first heard of this proposal, because I've never seen it. So, you know, I apologize for the cost. I've, I've had to do it myself, but, you know, in, in the issue of safety and fairness for the people that, that got the over 50%, you know, really, our hands are tied, and I would hope that it goes well and it brings you value.
So Jen, can you bring up the page of the recommendations, so people can see that?
Absolutely.
Action. So with the discussion that we've had, is there anybody who is willing to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number two and schedule the public hearing for final assessment for April 8th, 2024, and approve the agreement with the RCOC, finalize the plans and the project.
So a motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by Clerk Brook, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So the next time will be, if, so for those that are opposed, they have to show up, write. For anyone who is opposed, make sure that you write your opposition and send it to the public comment?
Or appear.
Or appear on April 8th. So that gives you the right to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
Correct.
So I'll make sure we got that up there.
It's just, it's just.
Okay. Sorry, for those that are opposed, please make sure that you either write in your opposition to, no, this is, sorry, can you guys hold on one second? So just make sure those that are opposed, make sure that you, in order to reserve your right to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal, you do have to write your opposition or show up at the April 8th to put it on record, and that will give you the right to, to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal. Yep. And then, so next, we go on to considering the award of the 2023 sanitary sewer rehab program contract presented by Director Cory Almas.
Thank you, Board. Tonight, this is for the, or this presentation is for the award of the 2023 sanitary sewer rehab program. Over the past several years, efforts have been taken to inspect, repair, and rehab the portions of the township's sanitary sewer in order to reduce inflow and infiltration. The focus areas this year are in Sections 2, which includes Fox Hills subdivision and Fox Hills condos, and Sections 30, which includes parts of the Kirkwood subdivision. So in this Division 1 is the Fox Hills subdivision. You show that, the color coding of the scope of the work for the sewer lining and grouting or combination of both, there were CCTV inspection. This is the Fox Hills condo association. And then lastly, Division 3 is the Kirkwood subdivision. Total of five bids were received for this project on September 18. DVM Utilities, Inc. of Sterling Heights was a little bidder. Although Bloomfield Township has no prior experience with DVM, the township's consulting engineers, HRC, has worked with DVM on several projects and has also received positive feedback upon completion of the reference check of past projects. Staff's recommendation is to award the 2023 sanitary sewer rehab contract to DVM Utilities, is to award the 2023 sanitary sewer rehab contract to DVM Utilities, Inc., and then not to exceed amount of $429,288.50 for Divisions 1, 2, and 3.
Got any questions? Wait one second, I hear one of the board members coming back.
Keep her warm.
Corey, why don't you give us a little background on this program?
Val, please come back up, we gotta vote.
How long, how long it's been going and what the purpose of it is?
Yeah, so the inflow and infiltration reduction is vital to the township. When water infiltrates or groundwater infiltrates into the sanitary sewer system, the township has to pay for the treatment of that, of that water. This program identifies when the DPW goes out and investigates throughout their, their annual investigation of sanitary sewer, clean and televising, they'll identify areas of, in need of repair. This program has been, I, I can't tell you how many years it's been going on. Several, several years that I'm aware of, I guess. I can get back to you with on that. But, but what it does is when we, when we line grout, it reduces that groundwater infiltration into the system. So it's, it's a benefit to the, and it extends the longevity of that sanitary sewer before replacement.
Right. So it's a proactive approach that we're taking to review the sewers using the camera system to identify areas of weakness that we can address before they become sinkholes.
Correct.
Funny, that actually came up in a conversation with a gentleman who said, well, you're not doing any water in sewer because I don't see it. I said, that's perfect. Because the water sewer we're doing means we're doing it before we have to rip it out of the ground. So I actually let him know of some of the projects that you've been doing, some, some liners. And I said, drive by. And he was like, all right then, never mind. I said, if there's breaks, that's a failure and we're trying to get there before that. So kudos to you that they actually thought there's been no water sewer improvements over the last few years because you're finding them before they need to be done. So thank you. Is there any other comments? If not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
To award.
Award the Bloomfield Township 2023 sanitary sewer rehabilitation contract to DVM Utilities, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $429,288.50 for Divisions 1, 2, and 3.
Support. Motion by trustee Murray. Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So Corey, we'll have you stay up there for considering the award of the 2023 Janran Selly Safety Path Program contract.
Okay. I've got a quick presentation for this one, too. So the board, back in February, approved the, the routes for the 2023 sanitary sewer, I'm sorry, Safety Path program, based off the master plan shown here. One bid was submitted and received for this project on September 19 from Italia Construction, Inc. of Washington, Michigan. They were the sole bidder in the amount of $1,277,425.62. The routes include Lhasa Road on the west side of, I'm sorry, Lhasa Road from Corton to Maple, and also the, what did I do here? The east side of Franklin Road from Kendry up to Fremont Street. Two easements are required for this project. In addition to that, there are three AT&amp;T utility pool guy wires that need to be relocated. There's, therefore, there's two suggested motions for this. One is to move to approve the bid and award in the contract for the 2023 Janran Selly Safety Path program to Italia Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,277,425.62. ESD shall have the authority to approve the up to 10% increase to said contract amount based on actual quantities needed to complete the project or conditions discovered in the field if said conditions and/or quantities are confirmed by ESD and HRC. Should quantities increase the contract above, or the cost above 10%, ESD shall obtain approval from the township supervisor prior to issuing approval to the said contract amount. So a mouthful there.
You are known for the longest recommendations, so I just got approval.
I can shorten those up.
That whoever sets this motion can just say, he recommends what's on the screen.
That's, that's the first motion.
That's why I just asked for approval.
I'm just gonna say, so moved. You did a great job on your recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Very thorough.
Motion by trustee Barnett for the recommendation on screen.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Okay. The second motion for this contract would be that the staff also recommends the board approve the AT&amp;T letter of agreement for the custom work and estimate a fixed cost government agreement authorized the township supervisor Danny Walsh to execute the agreement and direct accounting to prepare a check in the amount of $9,396.44 to AT&amp;T for the work to be scheduled by AT&amp;T. The funds for this work by AT&amp;T will be paid for out of the Janran Selly Safety Path Fund, since this work was needed to install the Franklin Road Safety Path.
By the way, I pick on your recommendation levels. It is truly an engineer's voice that you hear with the detail on there. It's lovely.
I'm still learning, Danny.
No, it's good, though. I mean, there's no question what you're asking for.
Good details.
So we have a suggestion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Clerk Brook for what's on screen.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Okay.
So next we'll go to considering the approval of the transportation alternatives program, the TAP grant, right-of-way acquisitions for the Telegraph Square Lake Franklin Janran Selly Safety Path.
So the easement procurement for the Telegraph Square Lake Road Safety Path Transportation Alternative Program, TAP grant, was approved during the 2023, 2021, August 23, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. Over the past two years, staff has worked with HRC to complete the necessary right-of-way acquisitions to facilitate the project construction. So here's just a quick general project details. The installation of the path along Telegraph Road from Square Lake and Franklin to the northwest there. Safety path is .8 miles long. The retrofit and install of three pedestrian crosswalks, and I'll show you an aerial view of that proposed route. The installation of ADA ramps at applicable intersections, and then funded through the TAP grant that was awarded to the township on August 2020. So you can see on the right side of the screen there, we're, we're providing pedestrian crosswalk access there, crossing Telegraph Road with what we would call a, the median there would be a refuge island for pedestrians there. That's quite a substantial distance there for people to try to get across that road. So I think this is a benefit to the township. Same thing there at Franklin and Telegraph Road, I'm sorry, Franklin and Square Lake Road on the upper right. And then also on the far left side there, we're crossing Telegraph again in two different locations, kind of cuts back, but that's, provides access from, it would be the east side of Telegraph to the west side. So a true benefit to the township. So all 10, at this time, all 10 easement acquisition agreements have been signed for a total fee owed of $515,942 to the property in order, in order to secure the easements. The easements received by HRC, or reviewed by HRC, ESD, and staff and our legal department. However, until the funds have been distributed, regardless of the signed agreements, the easements are not considered final and can therefore be withdrawn by either party until the payments have been made. HRC, here Dan Mitchell and Karen Stickel are here to answer any technical questions the board might have. But at this time, and I don't have it up there, I'm sorry, staff has recommended the board approve the process of payment for the 10 signed easement agreements in the total amount of $515,000, sorry, $515,942.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Corey, I know this is dealing more with easements, but for future consideration, has there been any thought about, well, the fact that it, I believe that, you know, it's a rather dangerous area, certainly with Square Lake, with Telegraph, just the fact that you're having increased islands there, which is very helpful. I'm concerned, though, as far as, has there been thought to putting in the flashing lights in the road when people are crossing that you see in some communities?
The, not, not in this case, because the, the pedestrian crossings are at signalized intersections. So the one that we show on the far west end, there is, I don't have a laser pointer, but you can see in the far left end there, west, left end, left side of the screen, that is, that is a signal. So traffic will be stopped. This thing?
Yeah.
What button?
I think we're hazing the new guy.
Yeah. So, so here, there's a signal here, right? So there's no, for a hawk signal there, when you push it, the light goes. It's not needed in this, in this, in this case. But because there's a traffic signal there, what the safety path does at that point was jog back to the, be to the south in this case, and there's another signal there. So there will be pedestrian indicators there that indicate cross at this point. Same thing on crossing Square Lake here and also Telegraph here. There'll be pedestrian crossing signals. Walk, don't walk.
Will there be countdowns? Like for that long one? That's a long one.
That's a good point.
No, seriously, so that some people know how quick to go?
Yeah. No, it's, that's quite a long way to go. So, yeah.
I've done without the crosswalk.
Yeah.
No, even at 14 and in Lhasa, they have a countdown, and that's just a small road over there in comparison.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Is that part of, is that part of the design right now, or is it something we could add? For the long, for the long one across?
I think it is, but we'll, we'll double check that.
Dan, did you want to add?
Jen, can you come to the mic? Dan's shy, but we're gonna make him come up.
So I'm Dan Mitchell with HRC. I'm president of HRC, so I don't work on all the details of this. But it got handed back to me because we had two of our project managers that actually did work on this over these last four years, had actually moved on to other occupations. So it fell in my lap. Really, what we're here for tonight is for the right-of-way, the purchase of the property to finish the project. When you're talking about the details now about these road crossings, I do think there are signalization portions where for the pedestrians to cross safely at each of those intersections. But Corey, you're exactly right. Each of those crossings already contains traffic signals, and there will be pedestrian signalization also to be added as part of the pathway.
Great. Because those, those countdowns are huge. I was just in the city of Boston where my son lives, and we're crossing with the twin stroller and we're going, you got 22 seconds. Okay, we can make it, you know. And some of the intersections are quite large, not quite like Telegraph. And the countdown gives you a really good idea. It's like, oh, there's only 10 seconds left. Don't even try that, you know.
And it never used to bother me, but nowadays it kind of does. So, yeah.
Well, Telegraph is, I mean, for Telegraph, yeah, a lot of other streets, not so much.
Very much so.
As a kid, when they had the movies between, and we went and got dropped off at the wrong showcase, we'd run across like nobody's business. But at 51, we need some countdowns.
I was around with the showcase there, too. I know very well.
If you got dropped off on the wrong side, you just ran.
You know, this is, this is an intersection and crossway that really concerns me. Concerns me about pedestrian safety. And so please give consideration to making sure that there's a countdown in there because I'm concerned somebody's gonna get seriously injured or killed over there. It's just, people are going very fast. They don't pay attention. And I do have concerns about this one.
It's already the largest intersection for accidents every week. Car-to-car accidents, so.
Right.
That or down at Maple, but yeah, usually up here.
I know, we're just talking about the right-of-way stuff, but.
No, it's, it's all related, right?
Well, it, it makes you think what people are doing now without the crosswalks and how they're getting from one side to the other side. So.
Yeah. I had it on, actually, one of the days, one of the days, this is the first time we've had to pay for easements because it's a federal grant. You have to offer these appraisals. Usually, we work with people. We might have to put in a tree or two, but this was the first time we had to negotiate. And someone said, well, nobody ever crosses. And my husband and I were driving, and we got on our drive cam, multiple people running across, one with a baby in tow and others. I'm like, oh, I should send this video. It was literally 15 minutes after work. It was crazy. So it'll be much safer. Any questions for Corey, Dan, or Karen? I appreciate Dan and Karen that you came tonight, too. Any questions? If not, I look for a motion.
I'll make the motion. You've already.
I can, I can reread it.
You've already read it.
Yeah, I apologize. It's the only one I didn't put up there.
Support.
So motion by trustee Barnett. Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So it is the Corey Show. So now we're gonna go on to considering the approval of the proposed routes for the 2023 Janran Selly Safety Path.
Yeah. So the board approved the proposed routes for the 2023 Janran Selly Safety Path program again back in February of this year. That included the, based off the, again, the master plan. And that included this Telegraph piece up to Pontiac Trail from Humphrey. So since that time, there's been some discussion brought to the ESD staff's attention about the safety of this area here through the paper road is what we're calling that. So staff did a little bit more research with, with some options of going through there and what that would look like. So what we identified is option one, but this is in no, you know, favorable order, just, you know, whatever order we put it in. So this was, the idea here was, okay, let's investigate going from Humphrey, which connects to the existing safety path at Telegraph on the south side of Telegraph and Humphrey here, and going all the way up Telegraph Road on the west side and up the on-ramp. This is the Orchard Lake Road on-ramp to southbound Telegraph. So running this, running this right up here, jogging left and then crossing here, there's a traffic signal there at, how do we pronounce that road? Maward? Maward? And, and then essentially tying into the Pontiac or Clinton River Trail access there. So we looked at that conceptual. We met with HRC staff, ESD staff, and MDOT, representatives from MDOT, to talk about this as an option. Another option, again, going through, up the same route, Telegraph Road, and then meandering through that, what's called a paper trail at D6?
I don't know how to pronounce that road.
And then coming up and tying back in up through Maward, and then again, crossing the intersection there. And then the third option that we looked at was coming through the neighborhood, going west on Humphrey to, what road is that? Humphrey to Rockwell, up to Lafayette, and then that's, that's Rockwell, Lafayette, and then that again ties into Maward, and then crossing, going back to the trail. So we looked at all three options. This is option three through the neighborhood. In our observation of this option, the proximity of the safety path would be too close to several of the houses there, several easement acquisitions, and also impacting the existing topography for drainage. So this one was kind of immediately ruled out due to the complexity of what the safety path and anticipated cost for that. So we really just narrowed it down to options one and options two. So looking back at the, this concept in the existing topography of this route here, it is constructible. However, the cost and what would be required here is to remove about, I think it was 600 feet of curb and gutter, remove the existing guard rail, construct the path, install, I'm sorry, install about 1,100 feet of retaining wall, and then reinstall curb and gutter and the safety path and the, and the guard rail. The total cost of that, you can see there was approximately $2.2 million because of all that additional work to construct that. The second option was to go through the paper route with a meandering, just jog back over at the bottom of the on-ramp, jogging through the paper trail, and then connecting into, again, to Maward, going back up to Orchard Lake Road and then to the Clinton River Trail. So this option, as you can see there, is $953,000. However, the concern was specific to this paper trail, this wooded area that's identified through there. So the intent with that and to kind of... of curtail those concerns was to install some LED lighting through that and kind of make it a meandering path through kind of, not necessarily a forested area, but do some clearing, tree clearing to open that up a little bit without taking the character away from the neighborhood. So speaking with MDOT and their response to us is, MDOT is, is in support of option two, but they're not opposed to option one, if that makes sense. So with that, staff, we're just, staff is looking for direction from the board on a recommendation of what their, what routes they would like to see us design and get in through that design piece now so it can be constructed in 2024 under the 2024 safety path program.
Corey, what does that mean to traverse a paper street? I know that the street is not there, so it's just a wooded area. So you're gonna cut through trees and make a path?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Karen on this one. So a paper, a paper road is a term that I just learned this year. It's a vacated, my understanding, and Karen, I'll defer to you on.
It's a street that doesn't exist.
It's a street that doesn't exist.
It's a street that doesn't exist, but it's still right-of-way, so we don't have to get easements to go through there. It's still dedicated right-of-way, and it is a wooded area right now. We're looking at clearing wider than just where the safety path is going, because like we said, we know safety is a concern. We talked about that back in February. So we're clearing a wider path, you know, leaving some trees in there, leaving some of the brush in there to keep that natural feel, and then we're gonna put in LED lighting to provide safety in that area so people can see from both Telegraph and from Mayord what's going on in there. So it's not gonna be a, maybe we put us a six-foot path in usually. We're not gonna cut eight-foot only and have people walking through the dark woods. It's going to be a little bit wider than that, putting in lighting for safety.
There, there will be, I'll just add that there will be some grading easements needed, I think, from three different parcels here, but staff, ESD staff spoke with a few of the residents that are out there who, those that we spoke with were in favor of the path coming up through there, in favor of the path altogether, regardless of what, what route we took, but we're not opposed to the safety path coming up through, up Maward.
Is that lighting included in that budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any pictures or anything that would show us a little bit about what you're planning?
We don't at this time.
No, but I, I think what we can do is when the, we wanted to know what, what route would be the preference, and I think once we get into the design phase of it, come back to the board and, and provide that layout, and, and when we do the presentation, we can show some examples of lighting that's being.
Well, I think. Not just the lighting, but the path itself. Like, so, so are you saying that if you, you would pay for the design, but and then if the board didn't like it, the design would just.
Well, no, the, I'm sorry, the, this, this, the concept would be, if we have direction from the board and which, which direction you'd like us to go from the design at this point, we'd get more detailed into the, the tree lighting, or, I'm sorry, the, the lighting, the LED lighting for the path. So we'd get conceptual drawings for that. I'm sorry?
The impact, too, of how many trees and.
We'd have more detail at that time.
I think when, from when I read the packet, between the high retaining wall, the high cost, and honestly, you know, watching you talk through it again after I'd read it, the path going all along Telegraph and then alongside that entrance ramp, which I'm very familiar with, doesn't seem like a real rosy place for, or safe place for the path to begin with. I appreciate the, the concern about going through the wooded area, but personally, I would definitely favor that. I think it would be aesthetically better. I think it would be safer, certainly would be far less expensive, but by widening that path in with the lights, it would certainly improve safety. And I think, actually, I'd, I'd be curious to go walk it sometime, because it sounds like it would be a pretty area to walk through, because you know I'm a safety paths proponent here. So my personal opinion is option two.
Do either one of you have an opinion between these two? Just, I'm just asking because I know you've been there, you've walked it, so I'm just curious if.
I prefer option two here. I think from a constructability standpoint, like I said, option one is constructable. It's going to be a lot harder to build. That retaining wall is gonna be anywhere from four to eight-foot high. We're gonna have to bring in a lot of engineered fill to go alongside there, because it drops right off on the other side of the guard rail. We're gonna have to put fence up along the retaining wall, because, you know, we can't have an eight-foot drop with people walking on that. I think from a constructability standpoint, this option's going to be easier.
I'm very frugal.
Okay.
No, I think I, I prefer option two. It's at least 60% less expensive, and the first option is just not very attractive at all. And I think that option two just will be a more pleasant walkway and, again, significantly less expensive. So that would be my preference. Certainly would want to see the conceptuals, but.
True.
Same.
And this is why we bring things to the board, and I never do thing in a vacuum. Personally, I'm, I'm okay with being a six-to-one vote. Yep. All right. Does anybody have any more to say?
Oh, thanks for developing the options.
Absolutely.
We have some concept. It's hard to debate it, and we don't have, like, numbers and, you know, some concept of what it really is involved, and so now we know this. It's, it's, I'm much more comfortable in saying option two.
Okay. This is what we needed.
All right.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see the next step.
Do you need a motion, so you have, or you're good with just knowing it's about six-to-one?
I'm, I'm good with knowing it's six-to-one. I don't think we need a motion.
All right.
Thank you.
Five-to-one, we have an empty chair.
Oh, sorry, five-to-one, five-to-one.
Five-to-one.
I'm not used to having six. All right, great. So we will go on to the next one is to make an appointment to the, fill a vacancy on the Board of Trustees following review of timely applications and receipt of presentations from applicants. And I'm gonna turn this over to Kirkbrook.
Okay. Thanks Supervisor Walsh. The first thing I want to mention is, is, you know, to thank the applicants for applying. Thank them for being here at this hour. It's almost 9:20. And when we build this agenda, we, we're always trying to put the items on the agenda that have public engagement or likely to have public engagement first. Tonight's agenda, you know, had a couple, three, you know, three things that fell in that category. And the next thing we try to put up there is, you know, employee reports and presentations so they can get home to their family. And the last thing are items that, you know, that, you know, that I may bring up is the clerk or the treasurer brings up. So thank you. We would like to have put this higher up on the agenda so that we wouldn't be doing this at this time, but just with what was everything on our agenda, it, you know, had to come at this spot. As you know, and I've been in communication with each of you via email, tonight we'll start with everybody having a three-minute opportunity to speak to the board and address us and anything they want to talk about. Every member of the board has received the packets and have read them. It's your three minutes to use as you feel, feel free to use. We're not engaging, not planning to engage in any Q and A during, during this time or afterwards. After that three-minute presentation by each, we'll end up coming back to the board to start discussing a little bit about, you know, what we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna come to a conclusion, a decision here. And the plan is to try to come to a consensus and take a vote on the appointment tonight, at which point in time the individual would be sworn in to, and take a seat here at the board, and we would continue with the rest of the agenda. So that's the plan. Anybody here have a question, or? Okay. So I, alphabetically is, is how I've prepared this. I advise you all of, you know, our approach going alphabetically. And so our first applicant who submitted the materials is Mr. Antokli, and please join us up here, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. And you know this very well, the three minutes will start generally if, if the timekeeper gets it going, when you start to address us.
I would like to make a point of order first. I'm aware of some public comments that came in regarding this topic, and I'm wondering if they will be read at this time.
We don't normally answer questions, but I'm gonna say that, I mean, as you know, we receive written public comment that comes into the.
I'm aware of two that came in recommending trustee applicants.
They come into the board and they are distributed to the board members. They're not read.
Not read into.
At any time.
That's for all, for all items. We all receive them, we all read them, but they're never read into the record. Go ahead and start his time again.
My name is Mark Antokli. Regarding the township finances, I believe I'm very well-versed in them, and I've identified approximately $4 million in budget savings that would not impact township services. These budget savings would be, could be implemented within the next 10 years. Once the first component of the budget savings are implemented, there's an additional potential savings of two to four million dollars. These savings would allow the township to have the second general fund millage in 2033 and completely eliminate the remainder of the second general fund millage by 2039. If selected, I would work diligently with the board to, to properly implement a strategy that would save our taxpayers some millage and tax revenues. I've also been very critical of things I'm in disagreement with the board, and I think to gain consensus, sometimes you have to pull out board documents. So I've been very outspoken about unfair and unjust treatment of public safety. At no time during the August 28th meeting did the 2.4 million of investment income on this form available on the township website was discussed, mentioned, reviewed by Jason Tice, nor did anyone ask. Regarding the water and sewer, I believe we're being overcharged. I've highlighted how the township from 2021 to 20, through, from 2021 and 22 generated over $10 million of additional fund reserves. And those fund reserves, instead of advising us where we were, where we were expected to be during the rate approval process, that it was delayed by one year. And when the funds were made available, all of a sudden, the township wanted to run and spend the money. I think that's not the appropriate way to go. The township should not be charging fees to generate revenues. I'm also disappointed about how the actually determined contributions were used to raise fees and increase expenses for the township compared to building inspection. And I think that should be changed. Once it's 100% funded, those fees should no longer be charged. To be sure, investments go up and down, and those need to be accounted for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antokli. Mr. Burnt?
Hi, I'm Ron Barrent, and I've been around here some portion of every one of the last 55 years. And my mom remembers Bloomfield Village, not only when the streets were dirt, but when there were not many trees at all or houses. So I've been around here a while. Probably saw my packet. I was a twice-elected councilman in Beverly Hills. I don't come here tonight with any particular agenda or any intent to tell you what you're doing wrong or right. I know that the best thing someone could do filling into this interim position is to sit down and listen. Perhaps it's the engineer in me. I tend to be data-driven. So the real advantage I can offer, I guess, is that with my experience, I know what to listen for. Public safety is probably one of my fondest areas. I had the mistiming to be on council in Beverly Hills during the Great Recession. So of course, when you lose half of your revenue, you tend to look to your biggest budget item. So that, that's where I realized that research and data is what is key. And in the end, we wound up retaining all but one of our sworn officers, police and fire combined, who we were loaning to Oakland County anyway. So we kept everything intact despite the challenges of doing that. And that's not easy, because as all of you know, you have an obligation to stand by your principles and what you have told the public that you do. And not everyone's going to agree with you. So that makes it a challenge, then, to work with people who don't always agree with you, to find consensus, to find solutions, and I like to rely on the data to do that. And I found that that works very well, so long as everyone respects everyone else, and ultimately remembers that they're there to serve the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Baron, Ms. Cargill?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. You know, I, I know that I'm the new kid on the block, so I want to say I'm very happy to be here, and I wish the rest of the audience actually was here, because I wanted to thank them. You know, this is a job that I take very seriously in the, my professional capacity in communications, is making sure that everyone has a seat at the table, to make sure that everybody has the information that they need to make the decisions that they need to make. And it's difficult decisions, and you're not gonna have 100% anything, anytime, ever. One of the things that I, I know that I can bring to the board and to the township, my new home, is learning lessons of Long Island, New York, where I'm from. Protecting the integrity, every community is unique, you know, protecting the integrity, the charm, you know, we're a suburb as well. We were. I'm still very much attached to it. I, I love New York, but I will always love New York, but it's lost its luster and it's lost its grace. And I know at what point we lost it, and being able to recognize that and to bring that to Bloomfield Township is, is something that I know that I can bring. Because whether it's overbuilding, which leads to overcrowding, which leads to overburdening our services, and then overburdening our people, our residents with taxes, tax increases, et cetera. You know, I'm looking down the barrel of 50, so, you know, one of those things of, of getting older, and my baby is no longer a baby, our youngest is 21. So my new hobby, my baby is my company, but I'm a busybody. And so I'll either be sitting there or I'll be sitting here. You're not gonna, I'm not going to disappear into the shadows, and I want to immediately roll up my sleeves. And I really appreciate the, the content and the work that's done in, in regards to details and research and numbers that, you know, that's the expertise that we need. And I'm not here to step on anybody's toes, so I'm just here to serve. If you need me, I'm here. If you don't, that's, it's fine as well. I just am getting up to speed now, and I've always been a public servant. I will always be a public servant, a community servant, whether it's being on the PTA, or even though I have no babies anymore, to being on the beautification committee, advisor, being an advisor and being pragmatic about the decisions that we need to make is, is something that, that I understand that we need to do. We need to make informed decisions as a community so that we can grow altogether progressively, and finding that balance. Because if we don't have that balance and we grow too fast and too quickly, there are certain components that we can't take back. There are certain projects that we can't take back. So we really have to take a look at these, especially construction projects, which I'm intimately involved in. I love my engineers. I work in the civil engineering space a lot, and so, you know, that's definitely added value as well for, for me. You know, the love of, of community, the love of our spaces, and the preservation of them. But also progress. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ford?
Good evening. My name is Ed Ford. I've been a resident of the community for 25 years now. My wife and I have been very happy here. We raised all three of our children here. All three of them became very successful in their own rights. I, I credit the community. I create our public school, credit our public school system for that. Each of them were able to go to their first university of choice. Two of them are doctors. One's a very successful graphic designer. We don't need three nerds in the family. Two doctors is fine. I served the community for 10 years on the school board, served as a vice president for several years, president for one year, and also served as chair of the two primary committees, the Budget Committee and Instructional Committee. I have no agenda to bring forward. I understood I understood that there was a opening on the board, and wanted to say if I couldn't leverage my background, both civically and also professionally, you'll see on my resume, I've worked in just about every functional area that you can imagine. So I think I could bring a significant contribution to the board. I have a well-established reputation, both civically and professionally, for being a consensus builder, focusing on strategy and specific strategic initiatives that can move that strategy forward, and leading those initiatives. So I offer myself up to the community, if you would see fit, to allow me to serve in this capacity as well. And I welcome this new opportunity, and I want to thank Mr. Brook for his concern about keeping us up late, but man, this is an early night for being on the Township Board of Appeals, the zoning board of appeals, so this would be an early night for us. So I'm not afraid of the late nights, or the briefing books, or the Brooklets, or the committee meetings, or leading them in any way. I look forward to collaborating with each and every one of you, to leverage our collective wisdom and brain power and creativity, to come up with solutions for today's problems and future problems. On the school board, I walked in right as the Great Recession was starting, and I'm happy to say we were able to come up with budget solutions that protected the integrity of the education for our children. And I'm sure that this body can do that same thing in terms of navigating us through some uncertain waters. And I want to make sure that this community never becomes a reflection of what's going on in Washington and elsewhere. I think we have a lot that we can do to work together, and I'd like to do everything I could to facilitate that and support that.
Thank you, Ford.
Good evening. Good evening. Be with me here. Hello. So the reason I'm here seeking a role as trustee, I would say, is rooted in a very fundamental belief, namely that the impact of good government can be transformative, but most importantly, even life-saving. And what I mean by that is that when I was just 14 years old and was living in the township with my parents, there was an incident that forever imprinted upon me the significance of effective governance. It was a day that could have taken a very different turn, but our township's response highlighted the incredible power of good government. To make a long story short, I was almost abducted that day, as I waited alone at a bus stop on a cold December morning, dark, chilly, and filled with snow. The passenger door of an SUV that had driven past me swung open, a man in a ski mask jumped out of the passenger, jumped out of that door, looked right at me, said, "Come here, boy," and charged at me. And I began running as fast as I could. And I hate running, I still do, and I have no idea how I managed to somehow get far enough ahead of this man that I was able to get towards the, you know, my family home and let myself in. And as I was running, he continued pursuing me, he kept shouting, you know, "Stop, give up, it's not worth it." And I had my backpack on me that was weighing me down, and I refused to shut it, because I knew it was littered with my school papers and books and everything that bore my name on there. So after I finally somehow got into the house and managed to evade these men, I alerted my parents, and the police were called, obviously. And when they were called for help, the response was nothing short of remarkable. The Bloomfield Township Police Department had acted very swiftly and decisively. About 10 different squad cars were dispatched, seven of them or so were fanned out across the area, went across the roads, Franklin, Maple, Telegraph. The two or three of them came to my home. They spoke with myself, my parents, and they took control of the situation and ensured not just our safety, but our well-being. They spoke about, to myself, to my family, and they took a tone of concern, of compassion. And what stood out even more was the ongoing support I received. The police department didn't just respond that day. They came to my school constantly. You can imagine how it looked and how it felt to be someone who's not known as a tough guy at all, stood less than five feet, but to walk out of the office with the detectives from almost, basically, the entire detective branch from the department walking me out, and all my classmates asking, "What's going on, and why aren't you in cuffs?" And I said, "I guess I should be a lawyer, I'm just a good talker." I convinced them. But that was perhaps the only benefit of that ordeal. But what really did stand out is that it showed me that good government doesn't just come down to laws, doesn't just come down to policy, and the dedication that people bring to their roles, that there is a very tangible difference that's made in people's lives, and I want to be a part of that difference. I want to serve the community as a trustee, because I believe in that difference, and I believe in the peace of mind that it can bring to community members. And now that my wife and I recently welcomed a daughter who's four months old, you can imagine how much more significant that is to me, and I'm sure to everyone else. So I stand before you today, ready to bring fresh ideas, a new energy, and a deep admiration to that role. I want to ensure that it remains a model of stellar governance in Bloomfield, a place where fairness, transparency, and commitment to improving the lives of everyone, business members, residents, people who interact in the community. I've seen firsthand all of this, that all of this can be done, and I know that together with your support and the dedication of our community, we can continue to make Bloomfield Township not just a better place to thrive, a better place to work, a better place to live, but truly a better place to excel in every sense. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering me as a candidate for this important role.
Thank you, Mr. Cargill. Kekos?
Good evening, Board. Thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Chris Kcolinski, and I would like to be considered for the open trustee position within our township. I'd like to tell you a little about myself and my background. I grew up in Oakland Township, in a family who values public service. My father is a Vietnam veteran, former U.S. Army, and was a firefighter for over 27 years. My mother was an elementary special education teacher for over 30 years. And my brother is a retired lieutenant colonel with the U.S. Army. My family also values education. After high school, I went to Oakland University, where I majored in finance with a minor in applied technology and business. Out of college, I had the privilege to work for Ernst &amp; Young, where I specialized in data analytics and process improvement. Even though I enjoyed the work at Ernst &amp; Young, I always had this need or this drive to be a public servant. So I went to night school to become a paramedic. After about three and a half years, I left Ernst &amp; Young and became a career firefighter, which I've done for the last 12 years. For the last three years, I've had the opportunity to work on the Union Executive Committee, where I served the role as treasurer. In that role, I've had the opportunity to serve on our negotiating team, as we negotiate and navigate contract negotiations. With that experience, I think it is a tremendous asset that the majority of our township employees are now covered under union contracts, and most of those contracts are set to expire in 2025 and 2026. So having somebody who sits on our board, who is sat in a room in negotiations, and actually is sat on the other side of the table, would be not only a strategic advantage for our township, for our board, but for our unions as well. In addition to my full-time job, I've also had the opportunity to be involved in several committees and boards within our township. I've been the chairman of the Board of Review, as well as I've been on the Financial Sustainability Committee. With that work, I've developed an understanding of both our assessing and our tax collection, as well as I've assisted with investment selection recommendations to our treasurer. If that wasn't enough, my wife and I started a small property development company, where we specialize in building single-family homes in Oakland County. That type of work has given me a working knowledge of not only building construction, property development, zoning, the Board of Appeals, as well as understanding the problems that developers and investors have in this current market when it comes to construction. As you can see with my many diverse experiences, I think I'd be an excellent candidate for trustee. Again, thank you guys for your time today. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve, as well as continue to serve Bloomfield Township. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kcolinski.
Good evening. My name is Paul Stoytrach. Good to see everyone. Our family moved to Bloomfield Township, because it's a great place to live, and the public schools, we moved here because of the public schools, and our boys attended the schools here, and it's an excellent school system. The township services have been great, and I just want to continue those services if I'm selected as one of the board members. A review of the board agendas over the past, over the past few months have shown the land use issues take a great deal of the board's times. I'm, in most cases, the master plan must be followed, and where variances are required, they must be reviewed, and then appropriate decision made. One of the issues that's going to be coming to the board's attention, no doubt, is going to be water issues. I believe that what needs to be done is investigation and, investigation and research as to the water issues, to make sure that our residents pay what is fair with the agency. In conclusion, if appointed, I look forward to working with you and representing the residents of the township. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stoytrach? Ms. Venegas? Last person tonight, so thank you.
No pressure. Good evening. My name is Sarah Venegas. Thank you so much for this time to be able to speak to you, and giving me the opportunity just to address the board. I'm humbled by this opportunity, and actually, listening to the rest of the candidates, it puts you in a really prime position, because whoever you choose really would be wonderful, would be an excellent complement. Everyone is so decorated, so I really am humbled to be considered for this position. I will say, though, that something that I think I do offer to the board and to the township is the fact that I have come from a diverse background. I have lived in countries overseas, military bases. I come from a military family. My father was in the military for 25 years, my husband served in the Navy for 12. Because of that, we traveled extensively. So between my husband and I, with deployments and things like that, we actually have 11 moves under our belt with two kids in tow. So because of that, we have lived on military bases, big cities like Boston, small towns, San Antonio, and then in smaller townships just like this. I feel that the experiences that I've lived, and the places that I have been to, have given me the experience of understanding what a community is about, what it feels to be inclusive, and how it feels to be a welcoming community. I understand what it means to ensure that everyone feels like they have a home, and I understand the apprehension that you all might be feeling, because I don't have the background of being from Michigan or living here for decades. But this is my home now, and we intend to be here for a very long time. We love it here, and I want to be a part of the community and the township, because of the fact that I feel that working with you all would give me the opportunity to move, move the township forward, and ultimately be able to help my family as well, because we are citizens here and living here. So I appreciate this opportunity, like I said, to address the board, and I look forward, hopefully, to serving with you all. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, thanks, everybody, again, for being here and for addressing us, and I know we appreciate the time you've taken to apply and to present your candidacy to us. Sort of back to the board here a little bit, I have a, and we've got now to sort of the task of trying to differentiate between all of the wonderful candidates that have presented themselves. And in the past, we have used a ranking process, and I, so I have gone ahead and created a form I want to pass out for everyone to take a look at, and see if we want to go with something like that to start. So just looking at this, what I would suggest is that, is that first, the board would, you know, discuss amongst ourselves, the candidates that have presented tonight, the candidates that have applied, talk amongst ourselves as to our observations thus far about the applicants, and after doing that, to, using this ranking form that we have, that I drafted up, to verbally indicate that, you know, I've mentioned here the top five folks that you have in mind. Now, all of them could be very good, but I'm looking, you know, to get maybe the top five, maybe it's just the top three, you know, whatever you guys want to do. I mean, the ranking form I've prepared is something we've done in the past, but by no means do we have to use it when trying to come to a decision. But, so this is, what I suggest is, number one, we will talk about the candidates as a group, and then, number two, we would use this form, ranking our, you know, the top five that you have in mind, the one, number one being your favorite candidate or preferred candidate, and five being the fifth preferred candidate on your list. So any thoughts about that? I mean, do we want to do five? Do you want to do three? Do we want to not use the form?
Martin, I was just thinking about it.
Yeah.
If we put a one for the more preferred and a five for the less preferred, and we're only choosing three or five, then some, you know, some of the people on our list would get zero, and if we're looking at the lowest score...
Well, right.
It would almost have to be a five for the first person.
So what I indicate was three.
The lowest score of it added together.
Yeah, so...
Like whoever...
The lowest scored candidate, I mean...
Like first, if, whoever, like, you're gonna get a score, you're gonna, are you saying that you're thinking that some that don't get...
Well, you get zero.
Yeah.
But zero means that...
Zero not counting.
Right. That they're out.
So do you want to narrow down to five first and then do lowest score? Just like narrow it down to five, or?
I just, it's okay.
We can do five.
I think it should be reversed, five to one.
We can reverse it.
And that way, you'd get the highest scores.
Okay.
Because zeros are gonna lower the...
Right.
Yeah. I do try to address that by saying the lowest scored candidate, so if you have a score...
Yeah, okay.
But I appreciate the five versus one.
I think we should have some debate and then...
I'm fine with that.
Right, discuss before we write.
What happens if you get more than one favorite? I was gonna say, what I'm seeing is a bench of candidates for all of our, I mean, we have a lot of boards that we need help on, so I, this is a really good position to be in, but I'm gonna go last, so...
I agree with Danny. I mean, I want to thank everybody for putting their applications in and showing an interest in being on the board. There are some great candidates, and certainly whoever is not selected, there are many of you certainly giving consideration to be on many of our boards, so thank you all. You, just, there's a lot of talent out there, certainly recognize it, and I know what you're going through, because originally, I went through this process in 2004, where I was appointed to the board before running five times. So I understand, I understand how it works.
Five times?
Yeah.
He's a five-timer club.
However, you call me whatever you want.
I didn't call you senior representative anymore.
But, you know, with that said, all these, you know, personally, I, I'll tell, well, I know the qualities that I'm looking for, but before we even get there, I don't know if we need to really look at five, but it's up to the board.
Do you have any favorites that stand out? Do you...
I do. I do. I mean, what I'm, I mean, for me, when we're appointing somebody to the board as opposed to somebody running for an election, you know, I do look for their connection and involvement with the township, have some understanding of how the township works, maybe some of the culture, the dealing with the residents, so people who were involved with the zoning board of appeals, or the planning commission, or Board of Review. I mean, I think all those experiences are important to me, as opposed to people who may not be connected at this point, but not to say that in the future, we would want to get them involved and connected, so...
So I guess the first thing I want to say is, as a trustee, we don't know, we didn't know about any of you guys till Thursday night. That's when we get our packet and all of our information, so it's kind of a quick study effort, as opposed to the officials that are, you know, employees that are here every day may have known more of you or had more knowledge or advanced notice. But I was very happy to see that we had nine candidates, because last I heard, we only had four that applied. You know, I ran for trustee in 2020, and we had nine candidates for four positions. And that was a, that was a good turnout of people that applied at that time. And to have nine candidates for one position, so many of you stand out in my mind, and the time you took, and the thoughtful comments, and sharing your backgrounds... time you took and the thoughtful comments and sharing your backgrounds, I sincerely appreciate that, and this is making our decision very, very hard. And I would hope that some of you, you know, we can only choose one, but it, some of you that have expressed this interest and this desire, as other people were saying, you know, their background, their, you know, they're passionate about the community, there are other ways, you know, that we will have other committees and other positions open and, you know, volunteer positions, whatever, there will be other opportunities, and we would hope that you would not just say, oh, I didn't get picked this time, you know, walk away. Some very, very valuable candidates before us, and I appreciate every one of you for taking the time and, you know, presenting to us because I think you all have a lot of great backgrounds to consider. And I guess I would say maybe narrow it in half, maybe go down to, you know, the four or five, and then from there, but I don't, you know, these votes are always awkward, and I remember the last one, it sort of got difficult because we were trying to narrow a larger group.
Yeah, last time we tried to go with two votes, two rankings, and it didn't really work.
No, it didn't really work.
So I was going this way with the idea of thinking we'd just do one ranking and then discuss again. And so far, what I've heard is, you know, maybe we just, we rank three, not five, and we go highest score is best, so you, you know, the candidate you think would be better because you're preferred would be...
Could you do four?
I was, I was saying four.
No, what if one of five, but if you're saying we can only have three, and I want four.
Four. Four makes sense for everybody.
I second that, Danny.
Because I feel like the ones that are...
Number four being your preferred person.
Oh, that's right, because biggest score is not...
That will go biggest score.
Okay.
So maybe Stephanie, do you want to chime in at this point?
Yeah, so I'll just add, you know, thank you to everybody who showed interest. I, this is one of the things that I love about living in Bloomfield Township is we have no shortage of great minds, and frankly, I think, you know, the more, the merrier, and it's only going to serve to help us have a better township and provide greater services to our residents, which is really what we're here to do. I had the opportunity, obviously, to look over the applications. I had the opportunity to speak with some of the candidates offline, and we had one of them come to our trustee office hours today that trustee Murray and I held, so that was also a good opportunity to speak there. So I don't want to belabor the point. I'm happy to go along however you guys would like to do the ranking. I, I think, you know, Ms. Venegas said it best, no matter who we pick, I think we're going to be in a great position, so I'm very happy to see the number of people that applied in the caliber of the applicant, so thank you again.
Okay. So I've been, I'm kind of in a unique position, although I guess Supervisor Walsh would be in the same position, starting our time on the board as a trustee and now coming into an administrative position. So for seven years, I was a trustee and ran in 2016 and just, you know, thought I knew what I was getting into and didn't really learn about it until the, you know, you really hit the ground and learned everything that we cover and all the things that we deal with. And so, and looking back on it, the things that I think about, what I'd like to see in a potential trustee, and it would be the same thing that I would tell somebody if they were coming to me asking that they wanted to run next year, I would say, somebody who understands the township and somebody who understands the role. And in terms of understanding the township, you know, you know, kind of, you want to have somebody who has lived in the township a while, understands the community, the nuances in all the different parts of the township. We're a very diverse community in many respects, and things that, you know, the issues that are facing the village, for example, are very different issues that are facing North Bloomfield Highlands, South Bloomfield Highlands, you know, Hugo Hills, or Club Drive. And so being here, living here, I think that that, you know, helps you understand the township, also being involved in a township committee. Again, Danny and I were the exception rather than the rule of the only trustees.
You were the first non-appointed?
The first trustees who were not appointed and who didn't serve on a committee. And, but that's not saying that I think that, having served a committee, I did apply for committees, I think you did as well. We applied for committees and didn't make it, but...
I never applied for a committee.
Okay.
I was in, I was in community committees.
Oh, okay.
Went straight for the gusto.
Right. So being involved in a township committee, understanding how the township works administratively, I think is a big help. And then lastly, in terms of understanding the role, somebody who's bid to meetings, watched meetings, speak, spoke, spoken with the board, and our staff, and is familiar with our staff, and understands the issues that we're going to be facing because, you know, I'm not going to speak for Danny, but, you know, that first year of being a trustee is like drinking from a fire hose most time, and with the, just amount of information, you're getting 300-page packets on Thursday, and then you have to debate, discuss it on Monday, and so you want, you want somebody that understands the role, understands the issues, and so that's, that's what's informing my thinking on this subject. And I do have some people that I've highlighted. I will agree with everybody else that this is a fantastic slate of candidates. Thank you all for your thoughtful responses and your desire to put yourself out there. I know it's not easy, but, and I would, again, echo, I think, what trustee Murray said, that, you know, we're going to have some vacancies in any event, you know, probably on several of our boards, and there's always other opportunities that we can find to get people involved, and so I'd love to, I'd love to see that, so. And I do agree, I think we should limit it to three or four.
I echo a lot of that. The one thing I was a little different is I was somebody, I've lived here my whole life, 51 years, but I was not somebody who looked to be involved in politics, so all of my stuff was community related. So I see value in those who have been on the boards and understand. I also see value in newer voices because I was as new as they come. I ran for trustee and nobody knew who I was. So I can see benefits in both, and that's where I'm getting some problems where we have a lot of great candidates. I also see some that maybe they're not on my first three or four right now, but I can already see other committees I would put them on. So that's what I mean, I just, there's a lot of choices that I don't think we could go wrong, but I want others to narrow first.
Right, right.
I want to go last on the narrow.
So right now, what I'm hearing is we'll rank four, our, you know, four favorite candidates, which will be a hard task, but if we could do four, and we, you have number four to the candidate that you think is your most preferred and so on. The candidate with the highest score is one that's, you know, considered, you know, the board's initial position is that, is that that would be a preferred candidate. Then we discuss some more and see where we go from there. You might notice, too, on this, on this form, I've got an order going right or left to right, so we would ask Mr. Barnett to speak first, Ms. Murray might mean next. We orally give our rankings, so it's not...
That was my next question. Are we just doing this in writing and submitting to you, or are we doing it orally?
Telling me what the score is. Tom, I will take a record of that score. We'd all try to, you know, add it up so we get, we get the right, you know, we've done the math right. I'm a lawyer, so, you know, math was not my thing, but...
Second nature or first nature.
Well, we check that, and then we have a screen here where we can, we'll take the tabulation document and put it up on the screen. But by the time we get there, the smart people who are applying will probably already have figured out what the top candidate is. And from my perspective, you know, this is a, I mean, this is a really difficult thing. Everybody has put forth some interesting experiences and have a robust set of materials they've submitted, doing very, you know, really a diverse group of different things. You know, from my standpoint, you know, a little bit about me, and I don't know how many people know this, you may know this, but I applied. There's a trustee opening that I applied for, I think it was in 2012 or 2011.
Is that the one that Brian got?
No.
No.
Brian was just before that.
Corin.
Right. And that was when I had just left the school board. Because that service on the school board was what really, you know, you know, while I always valued public service and thought it was important, the service on the school board really lit a fire under me to want to continue to do that kind of a thing, and unfortunately, was not selected and focused on my law practice for many years, and then ran for this office as clerk. And having not previously worked on a township committee or a township board, and no doubt, it's a fire hose of stuff to learn, but, you know, it's, it's something that I know all of you could do, whether you've been deeply involved in the township or not. And then, like, a couple of candidates, when I ran for the school board, I'd lived here maybe two years, but had moved here, you know, for the same reasons that many of you had moved here for, which is the quality of our community and the quality of our schools and the neighborhoods and the homes. So being new, that's not a, I'm not afraid of a candidate that, you know, hasn't been here 20 years. So, and of course, I do want to note that, though I say all of those things, there is no doubt a lot of value in folks that have previously, previously served in the township on committees and demonstrated their abilities to the township and the staff here. You know, I, I worked with a couple of the candidates, you know, because they're on committees, and spoke with the staff members who deal with those committees, and, you know, everybody, you know, the two gentlemen have received very, you know, very positive responses from everyone they've worked with here, which is great. I also, you know, either, you know, was familiar with the person or spoke with each individual or attempted to anyway in this process, and I want to thank, again, thank you all for taking the time to apply and hopefully, I know this is intimidating, but I hope we've done the best we could to make it as welcoming and a process as possible. And so with that, I would be...
Martin, can I just add that?
Please.
You know, you've been here tonight, you've watched this meeting, you've seen two or three of the most difficult things we have to do. So you're coming into this...
Still want it?
Eyes wide open. Dealing with, these road SADs are enormously complicated and very painful because it is such a difficult position that our residents are in. Also, making appointments, whether it's a trustee appointment, this doesn't happen every day, but what does happen every year is ZBA appointments, planning commission appointments, and we always get a handful of excellent and qualified candidates, and we have to sit here due to the Open Meetings Act, everything has to be above board and discussed out in the open, which, you know, makes it a little awkward, but, so, you're getting, you're getting the full, the full Monty tonight.
Yeah, because we haven't talked about, you know, we're not allowed to talk about it with each other behind, you know, closed doors, so this is, that's why there is an element, a little bit of awkwardness, because none of us know where the others stand, but I guess that's why we have to do the ranking.
That's why I want to be last.
Yeah.
And I have a feeling I'm going to be called on first.
Supervisor has her privileges, so she gets to go last.
Yeah.
But no, actually, it's Barnett, Murray, me, you, Steph.
He's doing it the way he normally asks for votes. Because you have a normal vote, he kind of goes that way.
Steph, I might skip me and go to you, but I'll go, I'll go third. So any, any other conversation or discussion?
Okay, so you want my four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Four being the...
Don't go too fast, I'm a little slow with numbers.
You know, some, he's absolutely right. Attorneys do not get these numbers. This, this number game's not easy.
I'm ready.
Okay. Kolinsky, four.
That's four points or fourth place?
Four points. You asked for it.
I just want to be clear.
You can't change your move.
I'm not changing, I just...
And then change your back there.
Double check, it's all right.
I just want to be clear.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
You get to razz your fellow trustees.
Four points, four points for Mr. Kolinsky.
Three points for Mr. Ford.
Yes, three points for Mr. Ford.
Two points for Mr. Stoichkov.
Two points for Mr. Stoichkov.
And one point for Ms. Cargill.
Got it, Ms. Cargill. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Murray?
I'm still deciding. This is just nerve-wracking. It's so hard. Oh, jeez.
This is why you get paid the big bucks.
You want, I can do mine.
Okay. Okay.
You have to decide at some point.
I have to make up my mind.
Just rip that Band-Aid off.
That's a good point.
So, and then we're going to have another go-around once we...
People pleasers up here, but it's time to...
You have to start sometime.
Got to start somewhere, and we're going to narrow it down, and then we're going to go again. So my number four would be Mr. Stoichkov, number three, Mr. Kolinsky, number two, Ms. Venegas, number one, Ms. Cargill.
Four, Stoichkov, three, Kolinsky, two, Venegas, and one, Cargill.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Sounds like a pizza oar. Okay, so my ranking is Mr. Keikos number one, number four.
I got it.
I got those down reverse.
Great story.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Ford, number three, Mr. Kolinsky, number two, and Mr. Burnt, number one.
I don't know that we're going to be narrowing much.
Yeah, we're all over the place here. You can tell. We're not working on this together, for sure.
This is exactly what happened last time.
Yeah, this is repeating history. Very mixed.
So I have Kolinsky, four, Venegas, three, Berent, two, and Stoichkov, one.
Stoichkov, one, Berent, two, Venegas, three, Kolinsky, four.
Yes.
Got it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Slow, though.
So, in keeping with my, you know, my thoughts earlier, I've got Kolinsky, four, four points, Ford, three, Burnt, two, and Venegas, one.
All right, that's me. Okay. I have, Kolinsky is four, Ford is three, Cargill is two, and Venegas is one.
Venegas is one, Cargill, two, Ford, three, Kolinsky, four.
Yes.
And then, Michael, you were Venegas, one, Burnt, two, Ford, three, Kolinsky, four.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a total here, Tom?
So, here's the totals.
Is this like bingo?
Yeah, yeah. So, let's see. Five, four...
Are we comparing numbers to make sure?
Yes, we are.
Four. We've got some ties.
Seven, seven. Okay, Kolinsky, I don't know, I can add up all these things, you know, there's eight, 12, 14, 17, 21. The numbers that I have were Berent, five, Cargill, four, Ford, 12, Keikos, four, Kolinsky, 21, Stoichkov, seven, Venegas, seven. Right? So, Tom, you can, Tom, incur.
So you have four, we ended up with four with a tie.
What's that?
Because of the tie, there are four instead of three.
I had asked for four anyway, so...
That's what I wanted to, but...
Well, there is four, right?
There are four. Yeah, there's, because of the tie, there's four, yeah.
So, you know, and...
So now it's...
So now are we doing this again?
And we rank those four.
Based on the four that exist now, I think is where he's going, but we'll let him.
We're not starting over again, this is driving me crazy.
It's his show here.
But Tom's going to put that on the overhead projector so everybody can see that. There we go. We'll actually go print off some more of these.
I was just doing on the bottom.
Yeah, I'll just, that's fine.
Like, just put their names down here and then rank.
You know, I have to say, one of the things that I think we, that Mr. Keikos, and that was an amazing presentation, your materials are great, too, and youth is something that I think that we could spend more time listening to and talking with and engaging with, and ultimately, what we're doing here is about the future, so there you go. ultimately what we're doing here is about the future, so there you go.
You're one of the ones that I already have some spots in mind.
But I, you know, at this, at this point, I think, I mean, there's a clear number one as far as the votes go, Mr. Kolinsky received the highest score for four of the six of us, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, Kolinsky and then Ford and then the tie at the bottom.
So we're going to re-rank the four, right?
You don't have to, you can. We could re-rank the four or we could make a decision, I mean, honestly, I see there's four people that.
You could do either way.
Right. And four votes, if we were to make a motion, you know, makes, is sufficient to appoint the individual.
You need four.
Right. Or we can continue to discuss it.
So are you looking for consensus and you want a six zero so we could rank the four that we have now? Or are you looking, or are you looking to say you already have four and you're looking for a motion?
I'm.
Which do you suggest?
I think there's a significant spread.
Yeah.
Between number one and the others, so it's not like it's even close.
So you could make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we appoint Mr. Kolinsky.
Is there any other discussion from, just to make sure that.
We need a second first.
Yeah.
I support.
So support, so is there any discussion?
Some discussion.
So we have a motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Ficki.
So the only, as far as discussion goes, this is exactly where we were last time when we did ranking, right? If you recall, there's like, well, should we just make a motion now or should we discuss it some more?
Well, we said we were going to do it twice and then I thought we were going to do it twice and we went once and I went, what happened?
If we rank it again, would the ranking.
Would it make any difference?
Would someone change the way they've ranked them based on, if they did it again, based on the top four? You know, of course, my number four would change because, you know, we're.
Yeah, but you can, you can vote all night on different.
Yes.
And then it's going to change, but like I said, it's not even, it's not like we have a 21 and an 18 or a 19, it's a very significant spread. So if it was closer, I would agree with you, have another vote, but I don't see the value in that.
And if I could just say thank you all again, because honestly, I can't tell you the hours that I spent reading over what you submitted and going back and forth and, you know, there's the people that had some township experience, but then there's people that, that clearly bring so much valuable, you know, you know, sure, older residents that have been here longer have the history, but some of the newer residents had just some fabulous things and there were some ideas about, you know, green space and parks and social events and that's what made this very difficult and I really appreciate it.
And we'll get them involved.
Yeah, and we'd love to have you involved, anybody that isn't.
Plus technically, if you think about it, if you're saying to make a vote on Chris Kolinsky, there's two positions open already because you can no longer be on those two boards if you get picked. So there would be a financial sustainability committee and there would be a.
Board of review.
A board of review.
Board of review.
So there'd be an automatic two positions available on two other boards or one position available on two other boards.
And we would hope that some of you would apply.
Yeah. So the motion is by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Ficki. Do we have to do a roll call vote?
You should.
We should do a roll call, that's you.
Okay, Mr. Barnett?
Yes, for Mr. Kolinsky.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Ficki?
Yes.
Mr. Schostak?
Yes.
I am yes, Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And just to point out, there are going to be two immediate openings on two other boards, so please, please apply to those and we will get those listed, but at this point, are you going to swear him in and then we bring him up because?
Swear him in and bring him up?
Alright, we're putting you right to work.
Yeah, you go to work right now.
You go straight to work.
Yeah.
There's still one still.
That was surprising.
There was five, I would have picked four, two and three.
Set a clean up spot for three.
And honestly, that's why we need this is two. But there's, there's five. He's been turning.
If Kolinsky, please raise your hand if you have committed. I, Christopher Kolinsky.
I, Christopher Kolinsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties. As trustee.
As trustee.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
Best of my abilities.
I know that you're the best spot because that used to be my spot, Stephanie, but do you want to move closer?
Oh, no, no.
That was by far the best spot.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the worst part about moving in here. You get to lean, you got room. Alright, so Chris will be there.
You can squeeze in the middle, but this is my seat.
I was so bummed to give that up, that was the best seat in the house.
There's not much of a meeting left, if you're willing to stay around, I'd love to meet with you.
And you told me though, that when we were given our seats, that you don't get to change.
Say thank you in person, so.
That's what you told me and then at the last minute, you switched me and Stephanie because I was going to be there and she was going to be here and you said, Val, you never get to change your seat.
Look how great your spot has been.
I love my spot and I love this opportunity that, you know, I have to say, it was not my aspiration to run for the board ever.
Yeah.
And it's been one of the greatest opportunities, so I encourage you all, it's, I'm grateful for the opportunity.
That's awesome, we're glad.
Me too.
This is going to be a great.
Me too.
Great rest of the year. Alright, so next we'll move on to.
I have a great seat, no complaints.
Considering authorizing township clerk to execute in a local agreement which will implement county early voting, plan designation, designating township library as early voting site and authorizing early voting for local elections. Did you have Corey write that?
Right.
Legally, you have to read these right.
Yeah, there's a lot in there. There's a lot in there. So as folks know, in 2022, the voters adopted a constitutional amendment that changed a lot of parts of election law. One of the items was to create a period of nine days of early voting. To implement that nine days of early voting, townships or municipality, it could be a city or a township, has to offer nine days of early voting. It only has to offer them on presidential years or gubernatorial years, but can offer them if they choose to during non-presidential years, so local elections for instance, such as this fall. Also, the municipality can decide to do it as part of, individually, its own nine days early voting site, part of a group of municipalities or as part of a countywide plan. Oakland County, it's the only county in fact, that's undertaking an effort to organize a countywide plan. Not every municipality has joined in, but many, many have, almost all of them. Locally here, the group that was suggested to be in a local election group was Bloomfield Township, Southfield Township, and the City of Birmingham. I have, as you probably know from either being on the Election Commission or hearing me talk about this during updates, that, you know, I have been voiced my opinion that whatever we do, we have to have an early voting site in the township, physically here in the township. So I had previously been of mind to want us to run a separate early voting site. However, during the process of working with the county, we were able to select a site in the township and be part of, and still be part of the group and obtain the advantages of that, which is there's staffing advantages because there's three clerks, three different groups of department staff, three election volunteer pools to pull from, there's sharing of costs that Oakland County will pay for, the equipment costs, and the municipalities will split the other, the operational costs of running the election three ways. So what I'm looking for is support to hold early voting during non, during local elections in addition to the constitutionally required even years and to select the township library as the site and then authorize myself, the clerk, to sign the Oakland County agreement with Oakland County. The agreement has been, is a template agreement that was prepared accordance with the statute and the state's Bureau of Elections and was reviewed by our attorney, Mr. Beckerleg, and there you have it. So I think it's coming together as best we could hope, which is a shared approach, a voting site in the township and offering on a consistent basis. By the way, the reason why I think we should do that is, you know, there's a lot to voting and the last thing we want to do is contribute in any way to confusing folks about that. We want to be consistent in where we vote and how we vote, election to election, so there'd always, under this plan, there would always be early voting, we'd be doing it at the township library. Now, of course, the library or municipality could drop out, there is a statutory window to drop out, which would occur after the '24 election, so this would be set for at least the period of the rest of this year and all of 2024.
No, it sounds great and everything we had discussed at the Election Commission, everything you had hoped for, it's wonderful to have the opportunity now for early voting and great that it's in the township still at the library, which is beneficial to our residents, but it's still not inconvenient for the residents of Birmingham or Southfield Township. So I think it's, it's a great, it worked out as well as you wanted and as well as we all wanted.
Yeah, thank you. And I, you know, I have to commend the library too, they've been very enthusiastic about this, they didn't have to host, offered a host of early voting site, like, I mean, everywhere that's in the township that hosts a voting site, a precinct doesn't have to do that, they do it, the schools do it, the churches do it because they're committed to the community. The library is the same way, you know, it's.
It's great for the library too, because it brings in, it brings in more foot traffic and people can see what they've got going on there and so they're very excited and I think it's great and I commend you for getting it done in the township.
Great, thank you.
I agree with both trustee Barnett and treasurer Schostak that it's a great presentation, a great proposal. I think it's really important to offer the early voting because we shouldn't be making voting so difficult and this really helps facilitate that. Library's a great spot for it and, you know, if people aren't regulars at the library, for the residents, it gives them a reason to go visit the library and see what an amazing facility we have. So I totally like this proposal.
Thank you. So we have a motion?
I make a motion that we consider authorizing the township clerk to execute the internal local agreement which will implement county early voting designated as the township library as the voting site.
Mention on the second page of the memo, there is, there is a proposed motion, it hits on second page of the memo.
I don't have it all printed, oh, you're going to help me out there, okay, proposed motion.
As the proposed motion.
You're going to make me read a long one, huh? Okay.
You don't have to.
No problem. I move to designate Bloomfield Township Library as the early voting site to authorize early voting for local elections beginning November 2023 and authorize the clerk to execute the county agreement and exercise all discretion the clerk determines necessary for the implementation and operation of early voting in accordance with the Michigan Constitution, Michigan statutes, and instructions from the Secretary of State. And should I state that it also goes through 2024 because you said that and it's not in your motion?
That's true.
And for, and for 2023 and 2024?
I would just, can we just leave it the way it is?
Sure.
Because if we want to opt out, we can address that in a future motion, but.
2023 it is.
Okay, I support that.
After all that. My trustee Murray's for by Clark Brook.
And one other thing, I do want to. Well, I don't want to, I'm not adding to the motion, I'm not adding to the motion, but I do want to mention that with, that there, the, you can see there's wording at the back which says authorize the clerk to make some discretion because this is the first time it's been offered anywhere and we actually do not know all the contours of how this is going to go and so I, you know, need the discretion that you all designate to, you know, make some decisions on the fly as we start to implement this, but in accordance, but those decisions of course be in accordance with this motion and with the requirements of the Secretary of State and the Constitution and all of our state laws. So.
Motion by trustee Murray, support by clerk Brook, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. So next we'll go to the appointment of trustee to the Township Election Commission and that'll be clerk Brook to discuss the vacation of Michael Spot.
Right, so Mr. Schostak, the, under the Charter Act, Charter Township Act, the Election Commission, which is the body that oversees election administration, is chaired by the clerk and two trustees are appointed by the Board of Trustees. In a non-Charta Township, the composition's different, it's the clerk, treasurer, and supervisor, but in this case, we, the township board appoints trustees. Mr. Schostak can no longer fill that role, Mr. Barnett does fill that role, so I'm looking to appoint, for the board to appoint another person to do that. So I don't know who's interested, Mr. Kolinsky, Stephanie.
I'm going to volunteer trustee Murray.
You are, I, I was going to volunteer our newest trustee Kolinsky.
Well, we have another, we have another spot that I think he would fit better in.
Oh.
Yeah.
Which is the next motion you mean, the one for the retired employee.
I will tell you, it is a fun role because you get to do the public accuracy test and.
And is it, in terms of a time constraint, because you know I have other date demands?
Meetings before each election.
We have one this week.
Right, there's one this Thursday and then before every election, we meet twice. There are occasional other meetings we have for information sharing.
So it's not like, you know, a heavy load of meetings.
No.
Because I'm on my other two, which I won't give up because I like those.
So this.
Yes, I accept, I accept trustee Ficki's nomination.
Can he be here Thursday at 10 o'clock?
I think so.
Okay.
I think there's a motion by trustee Ficki, do we have support?
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Does pass.
Thank you.
Welcome to the.
You'll have fun.
You know, I was interested in it, but I have my other two things that I do, which I like and so I didn't want to trade, so I was sort of looking at, you know, our new person, but I see there's another.
This one's on what an as needed basis with the election one, right?
We are required statutorily to meet twice, which is to appoint, Thursday, we're appointing the election inspectors and then near the end of October, we meet to do the public accuracy test, which is when we, we test all the machines for logic and accuracy through running a test deck of ballots through the machine to ensure that it's accurately counting all of the ballots.
Oh, fun, I should bring my husband, he's the check sorter engineer too.
Once we do that, he's happy to come, happy to come. Once we do that, we bring a machine here and we redo the test in a public forum and the trustees, you know, who are there, I have them come down and work and do the actual, you know, test deck running themselves, ask any questions and it's our public accuracy test, which we notice, we send out to the public, do all this kind of stuff and, you know, nobody comes.
Well, as you know, I've had.
So please come to our public accuracy test, if you wonder anything about the accuracy of our machines.
As you would remember, before we were in these positions, you and I had met and we had a conversation that you and I were both saying we should be like precinct delegates or volunteer to work at the elections. The next thing you know, we were on the ballot, so that seemed like a conflict of interest. So I do have interest in the elections and I, I'm actually looking forward to this now, thank you.
Thank you, great, cool.
So next we'll go on to our appointment of trustee to the Retired Employees Healthcare Benefits Trust Committee.
Right, thank you. I'll keep this brief, basically in 2005, a trust was created to collect funds to be used on retiree healthcare when those costs were to be borne by the township. Initially, the trust was created and only the treasurer was the trustee and so that was a lot of responsibility for the treasurer. In 2016, the board decided to add two additional trustees to the trust, so I still remain as a trustee. The board decided to add finance director to that position as a trustee, so that's Jason Tice, our finance director, and then the third trustee is to be a trustee from the board. And so the responsibilities, we have meetings quarterly, basically it's to review the investments and the holdings of the fund, we don't have any payments out of the fund because we pay the healthcare for retirees out of our operating budget, so basically we're just in the stage where we're aggregating funds and letting it grow over time and so my thought. so my thought was, you know, depending on how this all turned out, but Chris has been on the Financial Sustainability Committee, he knows all of our investment advisors, he's familiar with, you know, the investment policy and the strategies, it's very similar to the DB Pension Plan, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to introduce him.
So is that a motion or a?
I want to leave it for discussion, and then we can make a motion.
I would support that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I was actually thinking, maybe I should have, you know, talked about why I thought, well, now trustee Kolinsky would be a good fit, and in part, it's because we had trustee Schostak, now treasurer Schostak, who had that finance background, which I liked, having, you know, somebody in addition to the treasurer with that experience, and I think that's a huge asset that trustee Kolinsky brings now to the table, and I think he would be a great fit for this, this role.
So unfortunately, as the supervisor mentioned, he's got to give up his seat on financial sustainability, because Neil fills the trustee role on that, but I thought this would be a good, you know, he's familiar with the investment advisors and understands it, so.
Yes, and the assessing.
Yes, and the board, but that's.
But those will be.
The board review is, has less to do with the trust, the retiree healthcare trust than the financial sustainability.
That falls under my assessing department, so he doesn't care.
That's not, that's not at all what I said. That's not at all what I said, but I just said.
The board review's under my team, so join my team.
Having the background of knowing our investment advisors and coming to these meetings, it would be a natural fit.
Is there a motion?
That's all I'm saying, so I would make that motion, and.
I support.
To appoint trustee Kolinsky.
Motion by treasurer Schostak.
retiree healthcare trust committee.
Who supported it, I didn't.
I did.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome to that board, trustee Kolinsky.
Great, thank you.
We meet at 7:30.
And it's a 7:30 AM.
In the morning.
In the morning.
Yeah.
All right, he left that part out till after you.